You should be good.
I want to welcome everyone to the April 12, 2023 Open Space Board of Trustees meeting. We appreciate your participation and I'm going to call meeting to order. This is a couple of things before we get into the bulk of the agenda. We've got two important administrative tasks to do. We're going to administer the oath of office to our newest member, Brady Robinson.
I think the audio might have cut out. Now it's back.
Okay.
Are we good?
Yes. Okay.
So we'll do that and then get into the bulk of the meeting. To start, I'm going to do a roll call of the members. So Caroline is not here, right?
Not just yet, I don't believe.
Okay, Michelle?
Yeah.
John?
Present.
And Brady?
Here.
And I'm Dave and we have a quorum, so we'll proceed. Who's the Zoom host?
I am.
Okay, Leah will review the rules of the meeting for people participating on Zoom. Or not.
All right, here we go. Okay, so hi, the city has engaged with community members to co-create a vision for productive, meaningful, and inclusive civic conversations. This vision supports physical and emotional safety for community members, staff, board, and commission members, as well as democracy for people of all ages, identities, lived experiences, and political perspectives. For more information about this vision and the community engagement processes, please visit the website listed on the screen. The following are examples of rules of decorum found in the Boulder Revised Code and other guidelines that support this vision. These will be upheld during this meeting. All remarks and testimony shall be limited to matters related to city business. No participant shall make threats or use other forms of intimidation against any person, obscenity, racial epithets, and other speech and behavior that disrupts or otherwise impedes the ability to conduct the meeting are prohibited. Participants are required to use the name they are commonly known by, and individuals must display their full name before being allowed to speak online. Currently, only audio testimony is permitted online. We have a couple of people that signed up to speak in advance of this meeting. When we do get to the public comment section, we'll also have the option to raise your hand if you would like to speak. You can find that by clicking on your participant box. Generally, it's in the lower left-hand side of your screen, but you can hover over the top or the bottom if you don't see it. But click on the participant box. There's three little dots which will give you the option to raise hand. I didn't see anyone on the phone, but I can go over this again. If you are on the phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand if you'd like to speak. And I can go over that again when we get to that section. That's it.
Thank you, Leah. We're going to now administer the oath of office. So Brady, if you would read that out loud, you will become official.
Okay. I don't have to put my hand up before I do it?
No.
Okay. I, Brady Robinson, do solemn swear and affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the State of Colorado and the Charter and ordinances of the City of Boulder, and faithfully perform the duties of the office of a member of the Open Space Board of Trustees, which I am about to enter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And welcome again.
Thank you very much.
Looking forward to having you onboard.
Thanks.
Our next item of business is to elect officers. And I'm just going to take a minute before we do that and to point out that whoever sits at the head of the table, there are great expectations for that position, so I will try to meet those. I just wanted to make a comment that there's a guy named John Nance Garner who was Franklin D. Roosevelt's vice president for his first two terms in the 1930s and also was the Speaker of the U.S. House of Representatives in that role. And he pithily observed, according to legend at least, that being vice president was about as worthless as a bucket of warm spit. And although we used a different word for spit, but in any event, I do not feel that way at all. I think the officers of the Board of Trustees have very important roles to play. And the community has entrusted both the protection and sustenance of the open space lands and system to the Board of Trustees, and the officers certainly are expected to be leaders in that regard. And so I view the elections as extremely important. The role of the officers are outlined in the Rules of Procedure for the Open Space Board of Trustees. And with that, we will, or I will, open the floor to nominations. There are three officers we will be electing this evening: Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary. So if anyone has a nomination, please make that.
I would like to nominate Dave Coons as our Board Chair.
Are there any other nominations?
And are we just doing Chair right now?
Hello?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we, so here's what I'd like to do, John. If we can go through and get the nominations for all the officers, and then if there's a need to vote individually, we can, if we want to just do a motion to elect that slate of officers, we can do that.
Okay.
Second? We don't need a second, no.
We don't need a second. I'll nominate Michelle Estrella as Vice Chair.
Great, thank you. Are there any other nominations? And the nomination for Secretary? I will nominate Leah Russell. See, I can remember. Leah will be going on maternity leave shortly, but has served loyally and well for several years. And I think that the folks who will be helping in her absence will do great. And when Leah returns from maternity leave, then she'll take the responsibilities if she is elected. So are there any other nominations? Seeing none, can we have a motion to elect the officers that have been nominated?
I'm moved to elect the nominated officers.
And we will need a second on that.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. So it's been moved and seconded, so we'll go to vote by acclamation. If there is no opposition, then these are the officers who will be elected. Anyone opposed? Thank you very much, appreciate it. And we'll look forward to the next year with the board. So thanks. So then, we are moving on to approval of the minutes of the last meeting. And Brady, you'll be very interested but not able to vote, so you'll be abstaining. So I'm looking for any corrections or additions to the minutes on page one. Seeing none, page two, are there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, page three, additions or corrections?
Yeah, I just, I wonder whether we should insert my departure at 10:30 PM into the minutes to normalize that?
Good idea.
Are there any other additions or corrections? So we'll do another roll call vote on this, so the minutes, this is approval of the minutes as amended. Michelle?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, so that is a quorum and that will carry.
And Brady officially abstains.
Right. Thank you. Now we are into public comments. So public comment tonight, people can talk with the board on any item that they want, but just remember that there are no action items on tonight's agenda, so there will be no additional public comment on any of the agenda items. If you would like to comment on any agenda items, you should do so now during the public comment period. And I don't know, Leah, do we still have a couple of people signed up? So I think we'll do, we'll stick with the three-minute rule. And if anyone else would like to speak, Leah, maybe you just quickly review the process for that.
I will, thanks, Dave. The only two members from the public that are on, the two that signed up ahead of time, so I'm going to go ahead and start with them, and then I will offer that one more time at the instructions at the end. Anyway.
I just asked, I'm sorry, I didn't notice this earlier, but I think that there is somebody who is here from the paragliding community who's about to speak. And, you know, we have a 15-minute block that's nested, you know, pretty late, and I was just wondering, is it possible to move that up for them if they wanted to watch it? I know they can watch it later, but I'm sorry. I just thought I'd dirty lock it up. But just an idea, just an idea. I didn't, I should have thought of that earlier, but I don't know. It's only a 15-minute presentation, and so I don't know if we. Also, not.
Dan, I would defer to you.
Well, Lisa probably would love that.
You're welcome. Good looking out.
It's a suggestion, I think.
Happy to do that.
There is no rhyme or reason tonight for the arrangement of the matters.
Okay. So Janelle, on the volunteer presentation, if we move the hang gliding, paragliding one in front of that, is that okay with you? Okay. Thank you, Michelle. We will do that. So that will become under Matters from the Department. That will become the first item.
Perfect. Okay, so we'll do, so we'll do public comment.
Right.
So the two folks that signed up ahead of time, I have Dusty Miller and then Tom Isaacson. Dusty, I'll start with you. Give me one second to allow you to talk, and then Megan will pull up the timer. Okay, yeah, you should be able to unmute. I think I saw you hop on. Yes, we can hear you.
Cool. Thanks, thanks for having me in for doing this. I just wanted to quickly just thank OSMP and Parks and Rec for all that they do for the community. Just, I'm the Rocky Mountain Hang Gliding and Paragliding Association's Communication Manager, as well as the Boulder Site Director and a Boulder Native Business Order and Pilot. But yeah, just personally, it's been a pleasure to work with OSMP and Parks Department over the years, and the ARM HPA members are really eager to continue to work with the city. ARM HPA has around 300 active members now, and we're continuing to grow. And yeah, just a little background, we're an organization that works to preserve access and ensure landowners where necessary across Colorado. The club's been active on the front range since the 80s and is the 12th oldest free flight club in the country. And we have a rich history of flying here on the Front Range, and we're excited to continue to make history and work together. So yeah, thanks, thanks for all that y'all do and appreciate, appreciate you.
Thank you, Dusty, for your comments. Would you mind stating your name again, just for the record?
Yeah, my name is Dusty Miller, or Dustin Miller officially.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dusty. Okay, Tom, let me. But you should be able to unmute now.
Great. You can hear me, Leah?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Tom Isaacson, 3165 Noble Court in Boulder. I'm speaking on behalf of the Boulder climbing community, and it's more than 1,000 members. I wanted to briefly follow up on the email you received a few days ago from Kate Beasley and Rui Ferreira regarding the parking permit system for nighttime parking on Flagstaff Mountain from 9:00 to 11:00 P.M. And I wanted to first, again, thanks staff very much. We feel we have a great relationship with OSMP staff and the climbing community. We appreciate very much staff's willingness to develop this permit system and their willingness to give it another try for a second year beyond the initial one-year pilot. We feel that's emblematic of the good cooperative working relationship we have. I think we all share the same goals here of reducing truancy and criminality on Flagstaff while also allowing responsible recreation up there. But we do have a specific suggestion to, on how to improve the system. The problem that was identified by staff previously and in their memo to you is that too few people are getting permits. And it strikes us frankly at a fairly high level of confidence that a large part of the problem here is that you have to apply for the permit at least seven days in advance. And for climbers, and I suspect for other legitimate users as well, it just doesn't work very well. Flagstaff is nice, but it's not the kind of destination that you plan more than seven days ahead that you're going to go there, whether at daytime or at night. I've climbed at Flagstaff a great many times, and never in all of that have I ever thought, you know, more than seven days ahead that that's when I'm going to be going to Flagstaff. And so we think that that restriction in the structure of this makes it unlikely you'll ever get the kind of usage numbers that you want to achieve. And instead of the current system, we have two suggestions. One would be to use the model that's used successfully for many years for off-trail permits in habitat conservation areas, where you just go online, agree to abide by the rules, and boom, you get your permit. And if staff is concerned that some people who are applying for permits might not fully understand the rules, you can embed that in the system where the person checks a box. I agree, no camping. Check a box, I agree, I won't stay after 11:00 P.M. Check a box, no alcohol or firearms. Or bring to the person's attention any other rule that you want them to comply with. And I think that would serve both staff's needs and the user's needs. The other would be to have the permit available seven days in advance, but have it operate for a longer period of time, instead of just one day. Make it for a month, a season, or something like that. I think an approach like that would be a win-win for both the users and for staff, and achieve the goals that we're all trying to achieve here. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. It's good hearing from you, and we appreciate your comments.
Thanks, Tom. Okay, I think I will, I can't quite tell if a couple more people popped on, so let me just give that one last call. So if you would like to speak, you can do so by clicking on your participants box. It's usually in the lower left side of your screen, but click on the participants box, and then there's three little dots to use the raise hand function. You can also send me a chat in the Q and A section. No takers.
Okay. Seeing no one else, that will conclude the public comment period, and we will move on. Our next item is Matters from the Board, and there are three, an icebreaker, which Janelle will lead us in in a minute, comments and questions from the trustees on the written information, and appointment of a board representative to serve on a city working group. So we'll start with Janelle and an icebreaker.
Hey, Dave. And hello, everyone. Janelle Freeston, interim Deputy Director for Community Connections and Partnerships. And I also serve as Senior Manager for Volunteer Services, volunteerism, service learning, and partnerships. And as volunteers, you all are volunteers as OSPT members, we consider you ongoing program volunteers. And a part of that is you work really closely together, right? And so a key piece in that is getting to know each other a little bit better. And this gives us a really nice opportunity tonight, Brady, with you joining the board to share some of these, some of these questions that we've teed up for you. So we are going to ask you, you can go around and say your name, including your pronouns, and then a fun fact about you, it could be something that you like to do in your free time, if you have any pets, anything about your family. And then focusing finally on the OSMP system, and really, what about that you find interesting or inspiring? Maybe it's a trail, a natural feature on our system, a program area project. So it can be short, succinct, but just something that we can all get to know you all a little better. Do we have any takers who want to go first?
Sure, I'm Michelle Estrella. This is my third year on OSPT. I'm going on my third year. My pronouns are she, hers. And yeah, I love living in Boulder, I love all of the Boulder things. And that concludes trail running, not that I go very fast or very far, climbing, skiing and snowboarding, mountain biking. I'm also a mom of twin 11-year-olds, a four-year-old cattle dog, and a approximately 10-year-old tortoise. And she'll look to be like 80. But yeah, I'm enjoying that combination of family. My kids are still open to me dragging them outdoors once a week so far. They are open to it. You know, we, I love all things with the open space system, and I just appreciate being, I just have a lot of gratitude for being able to serve on this board and contribute to our community in this particular way. You know, I am currently enjoying whatever my kids enjoy because it's less of a struggle to be proud if they actually enjoy it. And my daughter right now is into birding, so we're looking into getting involved in the raptor monitoring program. Thank you, Michelle.
Thanks. Brady, why don't you jump in and?
Sure. Brady Robinson, he/him. I have eight birds in my household, three parakeets, and five chickens, three of whom are very little and hopefully aren't roosters, because that doesn't work in the City of Boulder. And if you want to know the trials and tribulations of Stefan from last year, the rooster that I had, and who we shipped in a box to Oregon, I'm happy to tell you about that. We also have an old snake, or an old cat and a snake in my household. A fun fact, I think I've climbed the first flat on over 100 times, the East Face. I have friends who keep track. I don't, but I'm just going to give a rough estimate. And I have to say that, having admitted that, I probably get a little bit of a rut sometimes in terms of what I do do and don't do in open space. And so I'm really excited to get to know more places, not just personally, but the issues and what went into them. And I'm probably one of those people that so often shows up at a place and just kind of take it for granted and don't know the full history, and the fact that perhaps it was restored 10 years ago. And so I'm just really interested in diving in. And I think the other thing I'm passionate about, which isn't something that maybe a lot of people are, is good governance. I've been on a lot of nonprofit boards, I've been on the receiving end of a lot of nonprofit boards as an executive director. I've never served on a city board before, and I would like to humbly do my part to help support this whole entire organization and our decision-making public processes to be as great and as healthy as they can be.
Great, thank you. We're looking forward to that as well. Okay. John, would you like to jump in?
Sure. My name's John Carroll, my pronouns are he/him. My husband and I have three dogs. We have a Great Pyrenees, a Mastiff, and a Chihuahua cattle dog mix. And for anyone keeping track at home there, that's over like 200 pounds of dogs. We have a lot of dogs in the house. Named Charlie, Ralphie, and Janeway, if we have any Star Trek Voyager fans here. In terms of OSMP, I used to live up near Chautauqua, so the trails up there, it's really some of my favorite areas. And my husband and I got married on top of Flagstaff Mountain, so that's really one of my favorite places in the whole system.
Good job.
Great, thank you very much. Oh, Caroline?
Oh, Caroline.
I texted her, she says she's having Wi-Fi connectivity issues, and she's working on it. Oh, thanks. Yeah.
Great. Well, in that case, I'll jump in. I'm Dave Coons, he/him, although that has never been an issue for me. And we moved to Boulder 53 years ago, and when we first came here, we couldn't believe what was then Boulder Mountain Parks, or what is now Boulder Mountain Parks. And, you know, what is excellent, you know, superb action by a community to protect the natural environment around it. We were just thrilled. The open space program was kind of in its infancy then, but underway. You know, so we were aware of, you know, things that were going on around there. It's, it's become a very important part of my life for three reasons. One is I really like getting out on the system, and some of my favorite trails are Long Canyon and Fern Canyon. In Fern Canyon, especially when you get on top of Bear Peak, you know, what an awesome view that you can see, you know, the Great Plains coming up against the Rocky Mountains, and it's just awe-inspiring every time. So that's been particularly important. The other thing is we have, my wife and I have two kids who are grown now, but both of them had, you know, tremendous experiences in the Open Space and Mountain Parks program. Our son was a junior ranger for several years and worked especially on the Hogback Trail and the Hidden Valley Trail at Boulder-Graley Ranch. And every time I'm on those trails, I think of him, you know, and all the work that that group put in that summer. And so that was, that's kind of neat. And our daughter actually has cerebral palsy, but she was, her life was really saved by the therapeutic riding group at Cherryvale. And she got into that and really connected with horses, and that was really a lifesaver for her. It was a bit of a financial burden for us because we ended up having to buy two horses for her over the years. But she ended up riding in the, at the Stock Show and the Colorado Open and up in Fort Collins and stuff. And anyway, they're both grown now, but I am greatly appreciative of the therapeutic riding program that is housed out at Cherryvale. Okay.
Thank you. If Caroline's able to join, then, you know, let us know if we want her to do this now or later as well, so depending where we are in the agenda.
Right, well, if she gets on, we'll fit her in at some point.
Thank you. And I'm going to turn it over to Leah. As a reminder as well, Leah's going to share, so again, as part of the board, you have your meetings here, and then also there are trainings that will be part of your volunteer experience. And so Leah will talk more about some diversity, inclusion, and equity trainings that the city has coming up that, again, we're in our mind, as a board, we really highly encourage you to attend, particularly if you can all join together, right? Because we want to, I'll let you continue, but we want to make sure we create a safe space for everyone. And, you know, I think sometimes unintentionally we might say things that could offend people, and so just making sure we're really teed up on that, and we have, we're up on, yeah, everything, all the expectations.
Yours would be more eloquent if you kept going than mine, but super quick, but Brenda Rittenhour joined us a couple of months ago to do training, and she talked about the work the city's doing in the DEI area, so diversity, equity, and inclusion. And she talked about the work the city is doing in the DEI area, so diversity, equity and inclusion. And there will be a series of various trainings. The first one that we'll be doing is advancing racial equity. So I'm going to send out or someone, hopefully we'll send out an email with more specifics on how to sign up. We would love if our board can do it collectively, ideally jointly with another board, but we'll send out those specifics in an email that will come from Brenda this week, we think.
Yeah. Yep, so stay tuned for that.
Great, we'll look forward to that.
Yeah.
Thanks, that's I think an important activity for the board to participate in. Great, so we'll keep going. The next item under matters is any questions or comments that the board members have on their written information. And there were items that were in the packet, the, an update on the Flagstaff nighttime parking hours and permitting system, request for sewer line across kep hired open space. And then memo on the open house that's upcoming to present activities, management activities for the year. So let's go down through those. If anyone has comments or questions on the Flagstaff nighttime parking system memo, now's a good time to ask those.
Dave, can you clarify for me what was the difference between this portion of the meeting versus when it comes up later in the agenda and when we comment?
It does not come up later in the agenda.
Oh, this is it?
This is it.
Okay.
So this is, yeah, the time for questions and comments.
Got it, okay.
So are there any?
Yeah, maybe I'll get started. I wanted to talk a little bit about the flags, actually before we talk about the Flagstaff nighttime parking issue, I just want for the record to state that while I professionally work for the organization, the access fund, I am representing my own opinions here as a citizen of the city of Boulder. The access fund has not weighed in on this issue and will not weigh on this issue, weigh in on this issue. So I just wanted to clarify that particular point. And yes, we're just, you know, looking at the memo, which I really appreciate and reading Kate Beasley's email along with listening to Tom Isaacson's public input. I mean, I just, I kind of just wanted to zoom out a little bit because when I was reading the data, I just, you know, I wanted to like, maybe kind of question the assumptions around those expanded nighttime closures. And I'm just wondering what, you know, staff thinks, do they think that this strategy is working? Of adding these additional hours and why or why not?
I can try and address that in the best way that I can. He's a good solid recreation management coordinator. And so this is a request from the Rangers because of the level of safety concern that they were experiencing up on Flagstaff after hours. It's one tool that we have to try to limit nighttime use was to restrict the additional two hours. So transitioning from 11:00 PM to 9:00 PM for parking up on Flagstaff, it's one tool. It's the beginning, I think, of a process. And while we might not have seen that much success this year, I don't think it's going to happen overnight. And I think this is important to support the Ranger effort to allow them to patrol more after hours. Their offer to extend their patrol time from 9:00 PM to 10:00 PM coming up in 2024, getting support from Boulder County Sheriff's Office to increase their presence up there. And so I agree, the tool of changing the nighttime hours probably didn't do as much as we would have wanted to, unfortunately. But it's one, one piece of, I think, of a larger puzzle.
Is there a reason why we can't have Rangers patrol later at night? I know that's like a budgetary, which we will launch into budget discussions, but I know that their typical hours end and you've expanded it by an hour, there's overtime issues to deal with. But if it's something that we prioritize, keeping that particular area safe, but that is something that we ought to seriously consider, not just overtime, but adding additional staff to do that and not having so much on the other law enforcement agencies? Is that something that we are also considering?
Yeah, and I'm just looking at who wants to dive in first. Yeah, for sure. And Janelle, of course, is the deputy over the Ranger group, I can speak from a budget standpoint. So across our Ranger group, we have 16 or so full commission folks and an additional five temporary staff. And so we're really looking at shift scheduling. And so we've got two sides of the week with overlapping Wednesdays and looking at visitation data around when we're seeing peak visitors, what types of calls are we getting? And then what types of capacity do we need in order to respond to those calls? So we've got folks starting early and then other folks running late. And it's really about how many Rangers should we have in service at any given time during those peak hours, which do not tend to be, right, 9 to 11:00 PM? And so we're looking at matching capacity, not to get ahead of ourselves, but in the budget process. One of the things we're going to be focusing on is these temp Ranger positions. And they've been temp for a couple of years and we have Affordable Care Act guidelines that keep those to nine months. And that presents some limitations and the way that we're able to use those folks to augment our post-certified Rangers. So one of the requests you're going to see is actually to convert three of those positions from temp into fixed term to try to augment capacity. Now, would that directly address 9 to 11:00 PM on Flagstaff? We have a lot to do to figure out where we're going to be staffing those folks. But that's just, everything you named is true. We're in a union negotiation year for BMEA, which is the union that the Rangers are in, overtime concerns, budgetary concerns and all of that. But I think one of our main strategic enhancements going into 2024 is what we refer to as presence on the land and making sure we have boots on the ground. So you are echoing something that we think about very, very often. And obviously there's, to your point, there are many tools in the toolbox for how we're going to bring those things forward. But I don't know, Janelle, if you'd want to add anything.
Thank you, I think you covered it really well. The only other thing I would add is also looking at it holistically with all the other priorities they have. As far as, for example, the early shift starts sometimes as early as 6:00 AM. They're going out to look for unsanctioned camping on OSMP properties. So again, it's just going into what Lauren was saying, like trying to balance all those competing priorities for the Ranger work group for, yeah, the issue-based things as well as being on the system with regular patrol.
I would also say the first year of implementation of this program was also one where our Ranger staff got hit pretty hard with several Rangers on light duty, meaning they had injuries that had them be more office-based instead of field-based. We had some leave, folks on maternity leave, paternity leave. So it was a little bit of an odd year for Rangers that overlapped this period in which that also presented limitations of beefing up this overtime late shift. So we weren't at full capacity for a good part of this overlap. So that's why we're looking forward to completing a full year, the rest of the year of 2023 and coming back to the board with additional data that we could bring forward that might inform some decision-making around this, so.
Oh, questions? Similar to, thank you for that. And similar to Michelle, I was just reading the memo and it's like, well, there was murder, criminal activity, all these terrible things, and so we're going to put in parking restrictions. And it's kind of like, hmm. So what's the theory of changes? Is it just the fact that when there's no parking allowed, you know, by definition, the cars that are there shouldn't be there and it just makes it easier to focus? Because one could say that, you know, the people who abide by the parking restrictions are the ones who are paying the price and people who are going to be doing all those sorts of things, don't give a hoot. So is that how it helps the Rangers?
Yeah, and the sign itself is a visual reminder to say that when someone parks there, they find the person that's in the vehicle, whether they're in there or they have to go chase them down away from their vehicle. And it's a visual reminder that, you know, you parked here, the sign says you're parked here in violation of that. And so that is a tool, like I said, it's one tool. One of the goals of the Rangers, being able to extend their after-hours patrol to 10:00 PM, is that they'll be able to quote unquote, clear the mountain. And so starting at the five-point mile mark at Green Mountain Summit, starting contacting everyone there, making their way down. Unfortunately, by the time they make their way down, they're usually have a warrant arrest, they have something that probably holds them up to be able to do it multiple times in an evening, especially if you're doing it for an hour. And so signs are one tool, but that is the goal of being able to have that presence during that time.
So the enforcement presence on Flagstaff, I mean ultimately is responsibility to Sheriff's Department? Is that correct?
Yes. Good timing. You might want to repeat the question for him.
It cuts out when he switches over to panelists.
I'll get Burton a second, because he can explain more. Hey, Burton!
So Burton, my question is, as far as enforcement presence at night on Flagstaff, we don't see a lot of the Sheriff's Department personnel there either. Is that right? Even though, aren't they ultimately responsible for enforcement?
That's correct, Dave, they are ultimately responsible for that. They have faced critical shortages in their staffing and they're, they've struggled to maintain their presence throughout the county. So but that is something on my, on my list to check in with them to see if we can have more regular patrol of the area from them this year.
Because if we got rid of the permit system, which I think, you know, was one of the considerations, you know, posed, and I'm not proposed, but in the memo. And we just do no parking, so no parking from 9:00 until 5:00. And when we look at the data, the signs don't seem to be working all that effectively. So then what?
Well, I would also say that some of this, for some of the visitors, it's going to be a culture, it's not going to change overnight. The other thing that we brought up when we brought up the whole, when we first were enacting this, is we went and talked about the other agencies and where they're at, including the Walker Ranch and those trailheads that are just above our system, although it's tend to be dusted on. And so even when you look at all the other parts of the year, maybe not June and July, is even more, is even a little bit liberal. So that was another factor too, that our trailheads in these areas don't become a destination for some, some folks that want to use our trailheads in non-recreation-based ways. And Burton, I don't know if you want to comment, but I know that when we brought up the issue more robustly when we first were talking about changing the parking restrictions to be more consistent with our open space partners, the rule itself and the signage provides the Rangers more ability than to be able to approach visitors because of that 9:00 PM ordinance change, I believe, was one of the reasons too. And I don't know if I'm correct in that, if you maybe want to elaborate on why it's important just to have that ordinance change in and of itself to provide Rangers with that, with the tool?
You nailed it, Dan, that's the main, one of the main reasons for us is it does allow us to engage in clearing the mountain sooner in the evening. And so it's, again, just works. It's, it's a benefit for us to be able to start that clearing process earlier in the evening. Yeah. And the area is a regional draw, everybody is familiar with that. But you know, the, when we check in with people, you know, they are from all over the Front Range within view of the flatirons, if you can see them, they're coming.
I think Kate mentioned in her email that we need to have more enforcement. And I know that's hard to do with labor constraints and all. And I'm just wondering if we thought a little bit out of the box about this because, you know, I live in South Boulder and I shop at the table next to King Supers. And there are two mall cops there all the time. And what they actually do, I don't know, they make people feel safer, but it's also a deterrent. And that, hey, we're watching you every time you come into this store. And that's not just King Supers, it's like every store, grocery store here in town. So, you know, these stores have implemented this. Is this, is this something that, I know that they wouldn't have the ability to enforce, but them standing out there and driving up and down Flagstaff, is that something that we consider to, you know, attempt, not a city or county employee, but somebody who can patrol and just be a deterrent?
So you mean like running a security company? I'm not sure if we've ever had, I mean, it's not the conversation, but I don't know if we've ever looked into how we can do that.
We're like looking at each other. We've done that on specific trail construction projects where we had safety concerns about folks coming in. We've hired third-party or flaggers or things like that to keep folks off. I think part of the idea with bringing on that temp crew, we've had that for three years now, four years now. Those folks are limited commission and are not full commission, but had that ability. We've focused the staff capacity on weekends and high visitation areas. And so they're able to flex kind of that, the capacity that we had with the Ranger group. So no, I think, I think we certainly have options around hiring contractors and vendors. And again, it was just really about how do we, in the whole world of the things the Rangers are responding to, start to prioritize where to, where to put those dollars and those people. And, and this is, you know, it was a pilot, a pilot year with one thing in the toolbox. And I don't, I don't think, I think a lot of staff would agree with and echo a lot of the comments that we've heard. So that is, it's all very well taken.
Well, I would say, and Burton, you might want to comment, that when you're making the strategic decisions of lining up risk with appropriate capacity, I believe where the Rangers have landed as far as nighttime patrols is that you're doubling up based on safety concerns and what we're dealing with on a typical evening up there, that it's just not one Ranger on their own and it's not a temp Ranger. In fact, it's two fully commissioned Rangers based on the type of incidences that we come across on the mountains. So the idea of something much less than that may be a concern. But I don't know if you want to just comment on, on how you are deciding what type of capacity you want to be putting up on the mountain in terms of capability?
Thanks, man. Yeah, to your point, we have them up, they're, they're up there together, but they might be independent, like they may be in different vehicles working together in the same area. But yeah, we've, we've thought that was an important starting point to have the fully commissioned officers up there. With the temp staff though, they, they do help, their presence during the day is, is pretty valuable throughout the system. And Flagstaff is one of those key areas that we focus our attention on. And so both temps during the day and, and full-time staff during the day gets regular visits. So we are aware that that deterrent can, can help.
Yeah, so I just would like us to think about the people who are trying to do the right thing. They're trying to get a permit, they're trying to recreate lawfully. And by, by having these restrictions that make it near impossible, even with a well-tooled parking permit program, which I think we have a long way to go to make it well, you know, well-run so that it's actually usable. But just question that assumption in general, like should we even be, and this is a pilot, and I know that we changed the ordinance, but we always said that we would adaptively manage both directions. If something wasn't working, we would consider, you know, you know, not just making things more strict, but also who's new happen, be visiting and sanction. So, you know, there are people who want to recreate, recreate out there legally and we certainly want them to be out there and possibly diluting, you know, or, you know, by having an honest presence out there, diluting the possibility that there will be criminal activity. It, you know, it's been proven a lot of cities that the more restaurants and the more people you have going through, there actually, crime actually goes down. And so I would love for us to also keep thinking about that.
Let me ask this, is it the sense of the board, on two things? One is that it's worth continuing a second year of the pilot permitting program, but also looking at an HCA permit type of arrangement, which has been suggested? Is that a fair statement for the board?
I was curious to hear from staff if the HCA methodology would be feasible in your all's view or not? That was a question.
Yeah, I can address that, yeah. So I'm Sam McQueen, Business Services Senior Manager, nice to see you all. So we, in this pilot year, were really focused on collecting data, figuring out what the kinks are in the process. And so this was a very early issue that we identified. We certainly wanted to look at faster ways to issue. We certainly wanted to look at faster ways to issue the permit. And so when we went out and tried to figure out what guidelines there are for parking already on the system during the day and what we needed to do to actually issue the permit, the best way that we could do this was to have a permit that would be displayed on the dashboard for our vehicles. So we're looking at permitting the vehicle and not the person. So for our habitat conservation areas, HCAs, which do have an auto issue permit, we're permitting the person, they have the ability to actually have the permit on their phone. So if they are out there, they can show their permit on their phone. With the vehicles, we had to actually have something displayed on the car. And so that prevented us from doing an auto issue. We needed to allow some time for printing, things like that. We know it's not a perfect system and we definitely want to reassess that. And so seven days was the fastest turnaround we could come up with to be able to make sure that we could get permits out to folks. But again, it is an issue that we've identified and we, we know it's something that we would like to improve.
Just as it compares to some of our other permit, we have daily and annual parking permits, commercial and special use permits. A lot of what the city has tried to do, and we've talked about it in previous budget cycles, is shift us to enterprise citywide permitting systems, which involve creating logins and submitting trip reports and a lot of things that require review and approval and capacity in a way that some of these auto issues don't. And so we, we certainly on, on our team in Business Services have staff who are reviewing things every day. Some of our other programs, like commercial and special use, we build in leave no trace quizzes and things that Tom was alluding to in his comments. What we've seen a lot in the applications are, in the applications, folks indicating they will be camping. And so, you know, that there's all this follow-up and needs with back and forth, right? When we're seeing, with the ones that we're seeing be submitted. So we're absolutely open to the feedback and suggestions. We agree that seven days is, is time, is time consuming and, and not aligned. And we're trying to be mindful of, of what the tools that the city's on, the tools that the city's onboarding, the tools are trying to expire. That HCA auto issue system is like 23 years old. And so we're looking at, can we even continue to support the backend of that from a technology perspective? So those are some of the things going on behind the scenes as we try to think about how to make this a better experience. I, we agree with you. That seven days is not a great experience.
Idea of having it last a month versus a day?
Yeah. So we did consider that. We had early requests for that and so looked into it a little bit more. I think to the point of, we really needed to collect data and try to understand what the use of the system would be or what the use of the permit would be. We needed to know what folks were going to be doing each time that they were out there. And so it's, again, something that we thought of to reassess in the future. But for now, we really needed to just understand, you know, were they going out for climbing? Were they going out for hiking? And so a blanket permit wouldn't give us those answers right away.
So what's the timeframe for your review?
It's seven days right now.
No, I mean for the, the.
Apologies. Yeah. So we, so we had done, had committed to doing two reviews in a one-year cycle. And so aside from just conversations where we're making sure that we're meeting and talking about the issues, we had more formal reviews at Downs twice. And we were trying to do that within a one-year cycle. What we've now said is that we'll continue it through the rest of the year so that we're, you know, making sure that we're continuing to collect that data. We, you know, you, you saw in the memo, our recommendation is that we don't continue because of that. If we see something very different this year, we'll, we'll come back together and have a conversation about it. But, you know, to the point of, we know that people were not applying because of that seven-day limitation. We recognize that also, but we, we really were looking at it trying over that one-year cycle.
Does it make sense for the board to get an update sometime later this summer or something as far as how things are going?
I'm going to open my call for that. Yeah.
Yeah. I did want to take the opportunity to share that I've been talking with Ruri throughout 2022 to make the FCC president, to make sure that we're in line and that we're providing enough support. We don't want to needlessly displace passive recreational use for, for no good reason. And so there are frequent check-ins between him and myself and he takes it back to the board. That said, I think we, we weren't sure when we were having conversations if this was in fact negatively impacting the community. He wasn't hearing any negativity coming from Boulders that they were being displaced or that they were frustrated with the process. And so I just wanted to echo Tom's sentiment that we, we do value our work and relationship with the climbing community, are in constant communication. Based on their feedback, we did decide to continue the permit process for an additional year. And we would like to have that full year to be able to process the information that we get. And we can touch back with the board probably at the end of the year. Summertime is going to be the busiest time in theory for, for Boulders to be out there when the daylight hours are a little bit extended. And so if there is an opportunity to show that there was an increase in permits, I want to make sure we give that enough time.
John, sorry.
I, I, I did. You all covered a lot of the great points, you know. I, I was going to ask about Kate and Tom's point about the, the HCA permits and how easy they are. Having lived up near flagstaff, you know, I, I was thinking about wanting to do up there. It was never a place I was planning, you know, a week out to go hiking at or, you know, to go do something in the evening. So thinking about how we could accommodate that, I imagine that turns folks off. Or any way we could offer longer-term permits seems, seems interesting as well and a potential solution, especially if we're having to print off, you know, parking permits for cars, which makes sense. So just, you know, kind of agreeing with everyone else there.
Great. Thanks.
Well, from a staff perspective, we got a lot of good feedback, a lot of, and of course, we have the formalities of checking in, but then there's always after-board meeting review in which we get together and say, what are we here? And so the team will huddle on everything we heard tonight. And we'll, we'll check back in with you this fall sometime on this.
That, that sounds good. And as kind of the ending comment, I, I want to make sure that staff knows that the board really does appreciate the efforts that you're putting in and, you know, trying to address the situation. And as Brady and others have pointed out, it's a major issue safety-wise for both visitors as well as staff. And we want to make sure that everyone is safe. So that hopefully we can come up with a solution that will help us do that. But we, we do appreciate the efforts that are being put in. I think we're kind of on a, on a good path to hopefully figure some of this out. Thanks. With that, let us go to the second item. Was the request for sewer line extension onto Gebhardt. Did anyone have any questions or comments from the, from the memo information on that? The only, the only thing I question is it looks, it looks like the sewer line extension just abruptly ends. And I'm assuming that there's actually a sewer line that it connects to. So it would be nice on the map if actually we could get the sewer line. Kind of see the location of the sewer line.
I think that might be attachment B. Let me just pull that up.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't, my eyesight isn't very good, but I didn't see a sewer line on, on that.
Yeah, I think it might be.
Hi, Dave. This is Bethany, Real Estate Senior Manager. Yes, there is an existing city sewer main in, under our Gebhardt Open Space property, pre-existed our ownership. And so it would be, if the connection were considered and approved, it would be connecting to that existing sewer line. And we will make sure our maps reflect that in the upcoming memo.
Be great. All right. So are there manholes along the existing sewer line?
Yeah. So the end of where you see the connection, there is an existing, that proposed connection, there is an existing manhole. Yes.
Okay. Yeah, no, that'd be helpful, I think, just to have everyone understand that, okay, here, here's what we're trying to get, or here's where we're trying to get to.
That sounds right.
Any other comments? Okay. And then the last item, Ann is going to help me out on this, but there's been a request from the city manager for board participation on a pilot working, board working group that she is envisioning for the step two of the Boulder Junction project. And she's requesting board representation in there. I have accounted, but there are a number of boards that are involved in this project and open space being one. And, and maybe you can just jump in and fill us in real quickly on your sense of what that role would be?
Yeah. So this is sort of a site planning project for the city of Boulder. I believe planning is the lead department on this within the city of Boulder limits. There's 11 potential boards that could touch this particular planning effort. And so in looking at how we could do this effectively for both the board and commission's perspective, the community's perspective, staff perspective, the city manager is putting together a pilot project in which she's suggesting that a representative, a single representative from all these 11 boards be sort of appointed to sort of, and those board members would receive some enhanced information. And there's sort of, their duty would be to kind of bring it back to the boards. They would be getting some more timely updates like staff would normally do. So it's a way to, how can we make the board and commission involvement process a little bit easier for everyone involved? So it's a little bit of a pilot project in which 11 boards of each have a single representative on a particular project. And perhaps if this goes well, it could be used in other citywide efforts that have this sort of big involvement. So open spaces are, you know, we have a kind of a very small set of issues out here. We have some open space other land designations out in this area, some small slivers. So I think that's why we are identified as, as probably having some potential board involvement. I mentioned that, Dave, earlier, that the open space other particular issue might have a decision-making path that runs parallel to the, to the planning effort as well. And so anyway, a small little lift for open space, but yet a nice pilot project that the city as a whole is trying to undertake by having representations from, a single representation from all these 11 boards. So that's the idea.
Great. And yeah, just a reminder, the, the open space other, the OSO designation certainly is, comes before the board whenever there's any kind of planning decision that might affect that. And as many of the board members probably remember, sometimes those get to be somewhat controversial or at least complex. And so it'd be, it's nice to have a board representative kind of early on in those discussions so that it doesn't appear that we're coming in a little late in the game. So I have checked with Michelle and John on what their interest in being the board representation. And John has graciously agreed to do that. So I am officially appointing John to be the board's representative to the Boulder Junction Phase Two Project Board Working Group. And hearing no objection, John, are you, we, we have high expectations for your role.
I'll do my best to make everyone proud.
Well, we appreciate your willingness to do that. And I don't know whether Caroline is still on, but a reminder, she is, remains the board rep through the Greenways program. And I'm not aware that we had any meetings or issues with that of late. But she, so we periodically ask board members to represent the board in various capacities. And this is an example of one.
Does that continue on in this next cycle? Do we need a reappointment or?
Well, I'm going to, I don't know, maybe.
Yeah, I think, Dave, and you served in that capacity two or three years ago in which that board used to actively meet at least once a year. The last couple of years, they have, they have not.
Well, Katie Knapp at that time was the kind of the Greenways project coordinator. And so she's managed to come over to open space. So I don't know, Utilities still has a Greenways program coordinator. But I have not heard.
Yeah, I, I could single back. And usually they do that around the budget time. So early summer would typically be when any action is taken. And, and at that time, Dave, you would report back and say, here's sort of what the budget's looking like. And.
And their, what specific projects might have, they're beyond open space.
And of course, staff monitors that as well. But I'll get back to the board to see if, if there's going to be any action.
I served on that previously when I was at Parks and Rec.
Okay.
Great. Once a year usually, maybe twice. So thanks. That concludes the agenda items under matters. Are there any other matters from the board that we need to consider? Hearing none, I think we're ready to go, Dan, to matters from the department.
And I'll just say, you're off to a great start, Dave. 707 at a 7-10 agenda. We have two minutes just to talk. We have three, three main items for matters of the department. And then there's some verbal updates at the end. But I always look forward to this April meeting because it's, it's somebody, when we bring a new volunteer on the board, this typically, we have this be the time when we actually honor our volunteers and do a presentation in an, in an important program area of ours. And that's volunteerism and service learning and partnerships, in which we have built a program and a work group over in which Janelle Freesten is, leads. And so typically we'll.
Thank you, Janelle. That was very good.
All right. So I'm not going to repeat all that in about 15, 20 minutes now. So, yes, you're right. We are going to go right to the Rocky Mountain Hang Gliding and Paragliding Association MOU, and Lisa Gonzalez is going to take that away.
Looks like I'm not allowed to share my screen.
Okay.
Might make the presentation a little more exciting.
Yeah, it's 7:09. This is awesome.
Oh, sure. Mainly because I don't know what I would change for you, Lisa. So how about?
Yeah, that's fine. That'd be great.
Can you do that now?
Let's see. Yes, I can.
Okay.
Let's pretend it was.
Sorry about that.
Let me just get this going. Thank you. Again, my name is Lisa Gonzales, Recreation Management Coordinator for City of Boulder Open Space and Mountain Parks. I'm very excited to talk to you today about the Rocky Mountain Hang Gliding and Paragliding Association and to seek the board's recommendation for a three-year memorandum of understanding with this group. Wanted to start by differentiating a little bit between what a paraglider is versus a paramotor. And so paragliders are non-motorized. They meet the definition of passive recreation activity. They've been flying in the front range on open space properties for decades, founded in 1975. Essentially, they are silent. They're carried in a backpack, about 60 pounds worth of a kite in there by a hiking pilot and where they launch from our designated launch sites. Different than a paramotor depicted on the bottom right-hand side, these are used gas-powered engines that turn a propeller. They're very loud, they're very heavy, and you cannot hike with them. They require a truck or small trailer to transport in. And so these are prohibited from launching and landing on open space. And so for the purposes of this presentation, we'll be talking about paragliders. So if they don't have a motor, how are they moving? And that was something that I have learned working with this group. It's fascinating. The most common way for a paraglider to get lift is by using thermals. So as the sun warms the ground, the ground warms the air directly above it. It happens more quickly in areas where there's a lot of surface heating, like the flatirons. They create strong thermals early in the day because they have a more direct angle to the sun than the ground. And for this reason, the front range is regarded as a paraglider superhighway. So pilots are known to fly very regularly from Bolden, Boulder to Golden and back. Golden has the other very popular launch and land site that's been designated through Jefferson County Open Space up on Lookout Mountain. Experienced pilots can fly to Colorado Springs, Fort Collins, and even Wyoming in a single push. Very impressive. Experienced pilots can fly to Colorado Springs, Fort Collins, and even Wyoming in a single push. Very impressive. Talk about the designated launch and land areas that we have here on open space to orient us. We're south of Lee Hill Road, north of Wonderland Lake, and west of Foothills Community Park. The green depicts open space and mountain parks property. The blue are the designated launch sites. There's a designated landing access trail to both. Unfortunately, this map doesn't show, but there is a designated trail that leads to that bottom left-hand corner launch site. The landing site is on Parks and Rec's property at Foothills Community Park, depicted here in the pink. And there is some overlap between the landing sites and the soccer fields, one, two, and three at the park. And so every year we coordinate to send the soccer schedules to the pilots. And that way we are able to avoid any conflict. A little bit about the Boulder Pilot Community and who they represent. It is still predominantly a male-driven activity, but there is a rapidly growing female pilot community as well at 18.4%. 60% of pilots roughly are between the ages of 20 and 39 years old. 15% fly Boulder over 100 days a year. And 66 and a half percent of their respondents have been flying for three years or less. So definitely a growing opportunity. If you've ever sat down with, with Dusty or any of the RMHPA members, you immediately get their enthusiasm and excitement for their activity. And they carry that excitement into trail workdays. And Beau, who's sitting behind me, can, can attest, he works directly with this group. And so every year they coordinate trail stewardship gathering. 2019, they had 30 volunteers. It's gone down a little bit. 2022, they had 26 volunteers. They restored 180 feet of widened trail on the Wonderland Hill Gliding Access Trail. And so they do exemplify what we look for and what we really appreciate in a recreational stewardship group. A little bit of the history, as I said, they've been flying from open space and mountain parks property for, for decades. We had our first MOU assigned in April 29th of 2019. That actually established their landing sites on Parks and Recreation property. Whereas before that, that wasn't formalized. And so that was a big part of that three-year MOU. During the pandemic, we asked for a one-year extension to be able to discuss with RMHPA where we were, what opportunities there were, where we were missing. Some, some thoughts that we wanted to make sure we made that time to have those discussions with them. We met in October and they're a wonderful group. We talked about top landing, which ended up getting approved. And so a little bit about top landing. It's a safety measure that they advocated for. It allows them to land back on the launch sites. So they would launch if something is amiss, the weather is off, something happens and they need to land again. They don't think they can make it to the designated landing site. This allows them to land back on those launch sites. And they also asked to be able to practice this activity. And so we permitted that as well. This was in line with Jefferson County also allowing them to top land. So we thought that was an important safety measure and we were happy to include that. Other than some additional insurance indemnification clauses, we did talk about some additional sites. It's a growing, it's a growing activity. And like I said, they are wonderful to work with. They, they give back and we wanted to open the opportunity to expand or explore what different sites could be utilized. Unfortunately, the sites they recommended, we couldn't approve because they were already not approved in other planning processes. They included private property. So there were just some things amiss with the sites that they proposed. What we did decide on was to have a longer conversation just to better understand what does a good launch and land site look for for you? What are you looking for geographically from weather patterns, from wind direction? And so we learned a lot and took a lot of great notes. And so that was in October of 2022. So I count that as a beginning of a conversation that we hope to continue. Which leaves us to today. So April 29th, 2023 is when our one-year extension from 2022 will expire. And so we are looking for the board's recommendation to give us another three-year MOU. And that concludes my presentation.
Lisa, does the MOU get signed by Prab board or just opens or not signed? Gets presented to the Prab board or just OSBT?
It doesn't. It did go to Prab in 2019 because of the formalization of the landing sites on Parks and Rec property. This year, there were no substantive changes as far as a Parks and Rec side of it goes. And so they were considering it as a renewal. So it doesn't have a requirement to go to Prab.
And what did you do prior to 2019? You know, they, they've been flying here for a long time. What, what was the impetus in developing that? I know it was formalized as landing on the Parks and Rec land, but they've, they've been flying and landing. So what caused you to develop the MOU to begin with? And for the first time just four years ago, if they've been doing this for decades on land?
I think it was something that was identified. I didn't, I didn't formalize it. So I, and I, I can only just say what I know. But it, it formalized our partnership with this working group. And so it provided for safety measures. They, they put up a windsock every time they go flying. And so it kind of set like, well, what the parameters, you can't have guidelines, you can't have this. You are required to check on it, make sure that it's in functioning good order. It established the launch and land sites. How are you, how are you going to get there? How are we, how are you going to get to? Some of the accesses are a little bit more difficult to, to arrive at. And so more than just the, I think, approving the landing site. It was just a formalization of our partnership.
So it wasn't, there wasn't any adverse event that sort of, that we need to lay down the law?
Yeah.
And then, so you, you started talking about renewal probably prior to October 22, right? And, but, but October is when you last met.
Yes.
And you've been corresponding about the MOU in between and city, Janet Michaels has signed off. You've all worked on that. So thanks for that, that background. When you, you talked about the different sites and it's been like, you know, six months since you talked last. Or you're, you seem open to having that conversation. Do you have any other meetings set up with them to kind of pursue some of their, the, the other ideas they have? Perhaps around, maybe it's new launch or landing sites or whatever, but we're, or just, you know, perhaps making better, improving the, the launch sites. Have, are you, do you have anything scheduled in terms of continuing that conversation or is it?
I'll, I'll call you later, you know, as, as we just make sure that this is actually something that, you know, gets people's attention and they're not just, you know, sent off for the next three years. Yeah, that's definitely not our intention to, to, to flip service and send them off for three years. I think this was the big push, getting this MOU agreement for another three years and ongoing conversations from that. And so we have been emailing back and forth. It takes a lot of coordination between the city attorney, risk management, Parks and Recreation. And now we have a new RMHPA president. And so bringing her onboard as well, catching her up to speed, which I know the previous president made a point to, to take some good notes and so we can kind of pick up where we left off with Olivia. And so that is the intention that we will continue the conversation kind of as soon as this piece is, is wrapped up, re-engaging.
So what's the process? So let's say you and I have a conversation and I come with some proposals. What happens at OSMP when someone comes with an idea? And I know we got the West TSA, the North TSA, which are in for a year. Where, where does it go up the chain and when does it come down? And is there an appeal process or like, how, how does it work for beginner here like me to this whole situation?
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm learning as I go as well and process is something that can change. So historically, this has gone through a planning review. And so when the North TSA happened, the planners in charge of that process reached out to RMHPA and asked them for, if they had any opportunities they'd like to consider, and then they go from there.
So that was their main bite at the apple, in other words, the North TSA.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. And that, you want to add?
Yeah.
And.
Brady, one of the, Lisa's position created in 2019, rec management coordinator was a brand new position for us. So recognizing that you basically, you went right to the planning process and went to a planner who was maybe. We realized that there needed to be more day-to-day outside of an individual planning effort to have a conduit to various groups. And that's why Lisa's position was actually created and we establish a rec management program area within OSMP to help sort of enhance that ability for us to have more ongoing continual conversations with groups and not just wait.
15-year cycle.
Not just waiting for a planning effort to take place. So that's really the kind of the purpose of what Lisa does. And, and this is one association and one outlook that she does. But she is sort of a conduit for that as well as our planners and any other staff that would have a reason to have associations or contacts with it. But we officially established that program area to sort of address that question you're raising.
And just, just one other lens, and I think it gets to what you were alluding to as well, Michelle. So we look at what the appropriate permitting process is for each of these things that comes up. So when we were looking at this years ago, is commercial and special use the appropriate forum? That's specifically for folks who are generating revenue off of the system. That doesn't apply in this case. And so then we're, we're in more of an MOU partnership framework. And that's something we talked about Thorn last year where we ran into a similar thing where the partnership and the way we're engaging goes much beyond like a, a commercial transaction. And so we're building out this MOU framework. And I would anticipate that that's something that we actually see more often now at this board.
In this regard though, the North Trail Study Area certainly provided a context for this. Is that not right?
It did.
And I would say also the Southern Grasslands and the Eldo Doughty Draw TSA, because those also had historical launch sites in them that were considered as part of the planning process. And actually the sites that they had brought forward in the last couple of years were sites, were those same sites from those previous planning processes. But it had been enough years ago that the, the current staff hadn't been involved in those conversations. So a lot of it was kind of pulling back up the information and the conversations that we'd had previously so that everybody kind of understood what evaluation had gone through that.
So I guess I'm just trying to let you know, Brady, that there's been a planning context that these areas in this recreational activity have been.
No, understood. And I, I guess my question is what's the threshold? If you've got a TSA process that happens roughly every 15-ish years, is that, is that our planned on cadence? What, what is the threshold for anything happening outside of, of those processes? Or is it really that the, the, does you get a bite at the apple every 15 years? And like, I'm just curious, where's the, how do you make some changes within that in, in, in between planning processes?
It's called the squeaky wheel.
The adaptive management.
I mean, I'm just curious, like, why does it work? If this is, if this is, if we're running down a rabbit hole, tell me and I'll, we can take this offline. I'm just, I, I think it's important though to just understand when, when is it okay to make a change outside of an official planning process and when is it not?
Well, we just went through a pretty robust e-bike discussion decisions. There's existing plans that speak to that and we, that, that got opened up.
Gotcha.
So I would say there is nothing that beholds us for taking an element of an approved plan and revisiting it. Right now, there is not a plan to open up, let's say, a whole planning process in the North TSA. We're just beginning to implement the North TSA. But it's not off the table to open up any aspect of a plan and to revisit it. So I think planning decisions certainly does inform and even could have very much relevance to today. And as you know, Brady, it's, I think you, you've been involved in some planning processes. Often planning decisions are all linked kind of together and you pull one thread and it, it's potentially linked to another decision. And so from a staff perspective, we do look, you know, we use some level of caution when we do determine to open up just one element of a plan, knowing that decisions often were interrelated and linked. So, but, but no, the answer is because something might have been approved or denied in 2005 doesn't mean that we can't look at it.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks.
Okay, Beau, I think you were mentioned here earlier as having worked with the group. Reviews, but, and in terms of their stewardship, can you tell me a little bit about the trails that they use? We talk a lot about it on OSBT about designated trails, undesigned trails. Are those on the chopping block or are they, if they are social trails, are, are there plans to designate them? Are, are there plans to close them? I don't know that, and I am a bit of an extremely map challenged. I'm also colorblind. So when you point out the colors in the map, I'm completely lost. And even looking at a map, it's, yeah, anyway, I've been very challenged because Dave's my mentor when it comes to maps. So you know, when they, where they access their launch pads, do, are they designated trails?
Yeah, yeah. And that's our focus has been the last three years and moving forward is to try to work on the existing designated trails that access the launches behind the one hill. And, you know, trying to balance that idea of sustainability with direct access. It's a sport that you want to get from top to bottom or bottom to top as, as quick as possible to complete flight. So as we look towards implementing some of those plans in the West or the North TSA in that area, it's, it's finding that balance of how can we achieve that balance of sustainability and recreation?
So do we know kind of the non-hang glide, hang glider, paraglider, use of those trails, what that is?
I asked, well, do you have an idea?
Other than anecdotal.
Yeah, there, I think Dion Vander Witty, our Human Dimension Supervisor, had data from 2012 was the most recent. And so, and it didn't differentiate between a paraglider versus a hiker. And so unfortunately I don't.
Presumably though, they get some ancillary use. Yeah. And so my, my concern is then when they get to the termination, which is the launch site, then what? And so are those conduits to then off-trail use throughout the system or not? So anyway, I, I, I think it's, you know, paying some attention to, you know, kind of what is happening, you know, on those trails because, you know, they're, they're designated trails, so people can be on them. But what happens once they get up to the launch site? And they're not hang gliding or paragliding. So the other question I had, and I know you know I'm going to ask this, Lisa, is on commercial use. And why that isn't referenced in the MOU? It's, it's my feeling that there ought to be at least some reference to the relationship of commercial use to this agreement. And what, you know, even if it's just, you know, commercial use is permitted under the commercial use permit, it, it strikes me that the city is responsible for enforcing commercial use. And so if, if it's not in this agreement under the city, you know, responsibilities, then there certainly could be some question as to whether in fact the city has purview in this particular activity to deal with commercial use. And, and I just think that there ought to be some brief reference, you know, just one, you know, alphabet saying, you know, how commercial use is, is handled and not belabor it, but at least reference it. So there is not a question in the future. And I know the guidelines speak actually pretty thoroughly to commercial use, but they are just guidelines. And that really doesn't hold a whole lot of legal water if there is a question on, on that. And I know in the past, commercial use at these sites has been an issue. And I'm, I'm thinking a long time ago when, you know, things were just getting started and people were asserting that, you know, they could do whatever they wanted, wherever they wanted. And so I think it's, it's definitely worth, you know, in a cautionary way, just referencing it in the MOU so that there's no question about what people need to do if they're going to be commercial operators.
We will definitely take that note and follow up. When we were first looking at their, the way that they're organized as an association and their fee structure, we have in the past had private entities apply for commercial use permitting to run programming. And it was a fee for service and they were collecting money and generating revenue off of that. And so very clear cut, commercial use with this where it was an association, a membership. None of the people who are actually flying are generating any revenue off the land. So we, we ended up in this gray area. But I think we can, we can definitely reference that language within there and just make sure it's circular.
Explain whatever it is.
Yeah.
You know, and one last thing, just as an interesting sidelight, Kate Towser, who was instrumental in actually getting this, this whole activity off the ground years ago, served on the open space board. And she was, you know, a commercial pilot, or she was an instructor. And, but it was very instrumental actually in the early, you know, agreements and working together. So there has been some representation on the board in, in. So there has been some representation on the board in years past directly from, you know, the, I recommend hang glider.
I was a member and learned how to fly on that great hill, actually.
We continue the tradition. All right, any other comments or suggestions? If not. Now, where was I? Don't ask me. As our biggest volunteer group.
Why don't we take five minutes?
Sure. Yeah, because it's been a lot of what them set up.
We'll be back at 7:38.
Bye, dear. Okay.
Okay, you're ready. Yeah, good to go.
And I think you're.
All right, I'm going to turn this next item over to Janelle Freesten.
Our Deputy Director of C C M P.
Yep, great, thank you. So, yeah, so next week is National Volunteer Week. And so it's, it's pretty nice. This presentation usually coincides with that. And so it's a great opportunity for us to share gratitude for those in the community who have volunteered with us in 2022. So we'll be taking a little bit of a look back from last year, a little focus on next year and sharing also our master plan implementation. And I'll say to kick it off, we will focus more on volunteerism and we will also talk a little bit about our team, which is volunteerism, service learning and partnerships, some of the other services that we provide beyond volunteerism. And some of the themes that we saw last year, just in a nutshell, innovation and then really focusing on system presence and continuing to support this amazing community of volunteers that we have. So, great, I will, we'll go ahead to the next slide. So, yeah, I'll be kicking it off and then I'll be also passing it over to Debbie Cushman and Beau Clark, who are here tonight. And in just a minute on the next slide, I'll show you who on staff are, have primary roles focused on volunteerism and supporting our community. Then we will talk about how our efforts support the master plan and our impact that with the volunteers that we've been able to make on the land. Again, plans for 2023. And then a nice, this is a tradition we have every year that we have the chair read the volunteer, National Volunteer Week Declaration. And then we'll wrap it up with any questions that you might have. Great, excellent. So this is our team from 2022. I won't go ahead and read all the names on the slides, but just know it's a mighty team here that we get to focus on such a great portion. What a great job we get to have, right, to steward, to steward these lands and really connect people with hands-on ways to give back to, to our department. I will say a few things to the VSLP team. Our team consists of the two pictures at the top. It's a volunteerism team and then the junior ranger coordination team. And then the photos on the bottom, Beau Clark, who's here with us tonight, as well as Dave Barry. They're not in our technical work group, but they, and they serve the primary role of connecting people to the trails, through trails, volunteer opportunities. And then I just wanted to also point out, there's a citywide volunteer cooperative. So there are volunteer coordinators throughout the city that we connect with. We have a shared strategic plan. We have consistency amongst policies and procedures. And so that's a really important base of colleagues that we share this, this, this amazing role with and trying to get people to want to volunteer for all of Boulder, not just O S M P. Great, so we'll go to the next slide. And we can just bounce to the next slide, so we'll just jump right in. This slide, we'll just be on this for a second. This showcases both the Xs and the stars, because I didn't have time to make it unified. Again, our, our services, our work group, we are really hitting upon many master plan strategies. And through that, we actually serve our partnership and we're supporting colleagues in all four service areas at O S M P. So it's really like, we are, again, like that conduit to try to connect the need. So sometimes the need can come from the project managers, like, hey, we could do some volunteers out on a project. Other times the volunteers might come to us and say, hey, we'd really like to get involved. And so we really try to match that. We're matchmakers of trying to make this work happen. So then, next slide. And I'm actually going to turn it over to Debbie now. So she's going to take a deeper dive and kick us off again into the volunteer. Good, we're back. And this is Debbie Cushman, Volunteer Program Manager.
Okay, thanks, Janelle. Hi, all. Thanks for having me here tonight. This slide is just our overall 2022 volunteer impact. I will let you look through the numbers. It will, it's very inspiring to me to see so many hours, so many volunteers. We'll be sharing for the rest of the presentation, examples of how the volunteers have engaged with the community and how they engage with the land. These numbers represent stewards being created and people willing to share their time and talent with open space and mountain parks, which we are so lucky to have. I'll give you a few seconds if you want to read the quote that's up there from one of our volunteers. Next slide, okay. This graph shows some of our volunteer trends. As you can see, open space and mountain parks experienced a six-year increase in volunteers after the flood. And of course, then we had a little drop during COVID times and we are ramping back up. We are working on getting back up to our levels from 2019. We've, we've seen a little bit of drop, but although we've seen a bit of drop in hours or people, we still have plenty of people doing many hours out on the land. We had a little bit of some staffing transitions in the last couple of years. And so now we're pretty well-staffed back up and we will be getting those hours and programs back all online again. So we're looking forward to that. We're also looking at just ways to retain volunteers and support them while they're out in the field. We do an annual survey to check in with our volunteers, see what we're doing right, see what we need to improve on. This question, our first one, was just asking how satisfied they were with their volunteering. And out of a scale from one through five, the average was 4.75. So we were really happy about that. We also asked, we always ask our volunteers if they're sharing information with other people, recommending to others, and 100% of them this year gave us a thumbs up that they are recommending volunteering to their friends and families. And probably one of the biggest things we've seen in the last couple of years in our annual surveys is the number of way volunteers want to be recognized. And even though they do like the gifts we do and other nice things, really small gatherings with staff is the number one thing they like. So we're really kind of restructuring how we do that. Things like whoever my partner is on bike patrol in the ranger section and I leading small bike rides with some of the bike patrollers, finding fun things like fossils out on the system and talking about regulations from the ranger side. Chad Brotherton led a couple hikes with the trail crew, the trail ambassadors this year, the folks out on the trails, giving information to folks and explained to him how we make trail decisions, which was great. So really finding cool ways to connect. We're going to keep working on that. I'm going to jump into one-day volunteer projects now. All right. This, one-day projects are not managed by me. They are expertly managed by Chris Weinberger on our staff in VSLP, as well as Beau Clark in Trails and Dave Barry on the Trailhead staff. These are grand totals for all of their projects. But Beau is going to break down the trail projects in a few minutes for us. And the one highlight I wanted to point out here, we're with our teen and youth programs. So we're pretty excited to have 269 teens volunteer with us doing some maintenance type work and some work enhancing the Sembrao Marsh area. Another example of innovation this year was recruiting certain, or looking towards some of our one-day volunteer projects and how they fit in with climate action. So you can see there's a seed collecting project as well as a chipping project going on in these pictures. We created an educational component, so we now invite one of our outreach and education staff members to come. And they come to these one-day projects and talk a little bit, help empower people to make differences in regard to climate change, tell them how their work here at Open Space is helping make those differences as well. So we're going to continue to do that. And I'm going to turn it over to Beau to talk about trail projects.
Thank you, Deb. Yeah, so in the trails volunteer side of the world, or the program is growing. We're seeing more and more people wanting to get out, help us with our trails, build trails, maintain trails, learn about trails. So we're trying to take all of that and kind of combine it into an experience for everybody. In 2022, we've seen some massive growth. We had 840 volunteers, worked 1,562 hours, worked a little over $136,000. You know, just some fun facts, we transported 84 tons of material to repair trails. We maintained 82 graded structures. We restored almost 13,000 square feet of undesignated trail or highly impacted widened trail. So we're trying to do a little bit of everything with volunteers and try to expand what we're able to do and what we're able to offer to give people that kind of stewardship experience. One of the biggest new things in 2022 that's been highly successful was Trail Work Tuesdays. That's a nice elaboration. Worked well with a hashtag to recruit volunteers via social media. In 2022, we did 11 Tuesday projects. So that's one every month, except for one that got, I think it was rained out or paled out or something between June and August. We had 68 volunteers, gave 388 hours. This really helped establish what I've been calling frequent flyers, those who come back again and again. They feel like they're a part of the crew. They meet others who come back. And what I've learned is, you know, some of those individuals have volunteered for 20 years with VOC or WRV in town. And I'm like, oh, well, you know how to do this restoration. They're actually teaching me. So it's really cool to kind of share that knowledge. And they keep coming back and this is kind of that growth model that we're looking for. It was so successful, we're going to expand to Trail Work Tuesdays and Wednesdays. So that's exciting. And, yeah, we're, we're hitting those master plan goals, reducing our trail maintenance backlog, reducing them designated trails. And then something that's kind of often missed is supporting that passive rec because you think about recreation is such a huge part of what we do. It's such a huge part of trails that, you know, whether it's folks that, that trails, the active part of their recreation, like a mountain bike or a trail runner or a horseback rider or like climbers or paragliders, that trail gets you to where you need to go to complete your, your rec activity. So we use those, those recreation groups to our advantage. Excellent. So where are we at, where we were at and where we're going? It really started in 2013 after the flood. We recognized everybody needed to get out and volunteer to help us rebuild our system, open our system back up after we had to close it, assess and figure things out. I would say we've had some slow growth prior to the pandemic. Those are what I kind of call the reactive years, kind of learning what this community wanted. Yeah, we always hosted National Trails Day. We always did these big Saturday events, but they weren't, you had sort of the trails program over here and then you had the volunteers over here and they were sort of interacting, but they weren't a cohesive unit. And I would say after COVID and in 2021 and 2022, we've been really proactive. Now, volunteerism is really a steady part of how Chad and myself really look at the work plan and start deciding how are the volunteers integrated into our trail projects? And how do we build new projects that are supporting volunteers? Yeah, and then just the, the graph up there just kind of shows that about one-third is like open to the community. Those are events like National Trails Day or Trail Work Tuesdays. Anybody can sign up to contribute. The other side of that is businesses and partners. So our partnership groups make up quite a bit of what we do. I'm trying to kind of get that graph back to a 50/50, open up more opportunities that you don't have to be a part of some other organized group. You can just come out and work with the crew. So that's the goal for it. Excellent. Talking about partnerships, yeah, we're constructing and maintaining our trails. Partnerships allow us to define roles and responsibilities, lean on some of our partners to recruit, retain volunteers for us. It's, it's a huge part of what helps me just focus on developing great projects and keeping people safe is relying on our partners to, to recruit for us. So there's been a growing request from local businesses, particularly ones that pay their employees to volunteer for the day. We've found that there's nobody greater at moving dirt and rocks than people who are getting paid to not sit at their desk. Just want to recognize some of our special user groups, some of those rec groups, older mountain bike alliance, flatiron climbing council, volunteers throughout the Colorado Boulder climbing community. And we talked a lot about Rocky Mountain, hang gliding and paragliding. Those are those groups that we're really building these relationships with and helping us to get our work done. In 2022, we had the watershed school, group of middle school age students came and spent a week with us, various trail progress projects, they got some education outreach time. I thought by the end of the week, it was really cool to see the kids not only recognize how hard trail work is and how important it is, but they learned a lot and we learned a lot from them. Oh, right, they were seeing things that I just don't see. My brain is so like focused on dirt and rocks. And they're like, well, yeah, but what if you went around this tree or you did it? I'm like, you need to look at things. So in 2023, we're going to focus our partnership on the North Sky Trail construction. We have an MOU with Boulder Mountain Bike Alliance and then we have a service contract with volunteers throughout Colorado. They're going to be integral partners in addition to other community members to help us build that trail. And just last, I just want to point out, you know, getting towards this North, North Skyle model where volunteers and O S M P trails are combined into one. But it really started a couple of years ago on the Royal Archery Route with Boulder Climbing Community and Flatiron Climbing Council, who, you know, who paid some of their trail crews to come in and help us. But they also brought immense amount of volunteers and people that would come back and who knew that trail and wanted to help us get it to the place it is. It turned out to be very successful and saved us a lot of money, too. So that was highlight. Thanks.
Okay, I'm going to jump back in and we've kind of heard a lot about our trail projects and our one-day volunteer projects. And I am going to move into talking about the programs, projects I manage, which are the long-term committed commitment volunteers. And this slide shows our three top hourly groups. And O S B T is the little place. 15 minutes to figure out what email address. Well, you guys, y'all can, y'all can always call me and I can help you put your hours in because I do, I'm on CMIB 24 hours a day, it seems like. So just give me a shout. But our big hour groups are wildlife monitors, really, are just two groups. Our bat and raptor monitors give us the most hours on the land, which is really fantastic. Our trail ambassadors are, we've called them trail guides up to now. We call them trail patrollers in the past. It's a very long time program. We're calling them trail ambassadors now. So, and, and then O S B T. So thank you all for all your hours. I'm seeing them. Next slide.
You're not seeing mine.
We'll talk about that. I just talked to Janelle. So our volunteer ambassadors are out on the land at popular trailheads, usually at Chautauqua or in the ranger cottage. They're up at Flagstaff Nature Center. Our trail and bike ambassadors are out recreating alongside all of our visitors. Ambassadors all wear uniforms. They turn in reports that provide O S M P staff with very timely information on things like trail damage, fence repairs, down trees, damaged signs, as well as some general usage and conflict issues. So I'm really moving away from using these words, reduced user conflict. And I put in quotes up there promoting visitor harmony. So that's my new tagline, that's my 2023 tagline for volunteer. We are promoting visitor harmony. Those are the number of contacts each of those groups make. They're pretty substantial, incredible amount of contacts we are making. I know Bike Patrol or in our agency Bike Patrol looks small, but we're not asking our mountain bikers to jump off bikes and make constant contacts, but they are there modeling really good behavior and helping out with trail, trail repair, bike repairs and things like that on the system. A couple of other things I just wanted to point out that some, some new things we did this year that top, well, last year we put some shade structures up for our volunteers up at the Chautauqua Trailheads. That's the top picture. And we're really finding we make a lot more contacts when we're out on the trail at the trailhead versus in the ranger cottage to code for that one to happen. Because I worked in the ranger cottage until then, before COVID. Went, wow, look at all these people we're talking to standing out right here at the trailhead. So that was exciting. We are also, the bottom picture is Bike Patrol. We did a little partnership this year with the Horsemen's Association, the Boulder County Horsemen's Association. They came to me with some concerns about horse bike conflict on our trails. And we said, okay, let's pull on our interagency bike patrol. And we said, okay, let's pull on our interagency Bike Patrol and we'll figure out some ways to do it. So we're trying to do some more trailhead outreach to bikers. And they're stopping, we're giving them swag on the weekends out places. This was out at Boulder Valley Ranch this fall. So we're going to keep doing those where our trail ambassadors are going to be up on Shanahan starting on May 1st when the cows go out to eat all the grass. Explain a little more to the community why we have cows out and what they're doing on the system. But we found our folks putting those cows out, our resource stewardship team would love to have more help out there. And we thought, perfect, perfect job for trail ambassadors. And just so, just wanted to point out, one thing we just started in the last year or so with this team especially, but we're going to try to do with all our teams is at all trainings from now on and all team meetings, there is 15 to 20 minutes of Jedi work. So justice, equity, diversity and inclusion work going on. And I'm pulling, you know, small bits from lots of places and we'll look at formalizing that a little bit more in the future. Another one of our ongoing programs is trail and trailhead maintenance. We have folks who are out there doing some very thankless work of picking up dog poop on the system. And in the last few years, starting in 2019, working with Lisa Cansolo, we started the Let's Do It campaign, which came out of Jeffco originally, and we now do it with Jeffco Boulder County and City Parks and Recs folks. And we're just trying to kind of have a standard message along the whole front range for all our trail users. Pick up your poop, take it with you, put it in a trash can. And this is a group who is participating with us this year. The model that we've used here on Open Space, all the agencies are kind of doing a little bit, you know, a little bit different methods. But what we've done here is we have these orange flags and there's a picture of one in the sign up there. We're going out usually on a Thursday or a Friday at different trailheads. And we are flagging piles of poop that are left on the trail. We're flagging bags that are left on the trail. And we put a sign, a sign board like this one up that explains to the public what the flags are. So for the next couple of days, when they see the flags, they can read about it. And we're also inviting them back on the weekend to come help us pick the poop up. So we have had some pretty good success with this program. We're going to scale it back a little bit this year. We got, we did about five trailheads last year. It was very staff intensive, very volunteer intensive and it was great. I think we're going to just try to do a small one this year out at Dry Creek, which is pretty much our biggest problem area for dog poop. So May 7th, if anyone wants to join us, pick it up. These are some of our resource restoration steward groups. On Open Space, our Boulder Creek Path foothills hospital site group is a small but mighty team. They are doing work with eradicating thistle, teasel, motherwort, sweet pea and garlic mustard and dame's racket. The Skunk Canyon team is in its third year. This was a neighborhood partnership that was interesting, interested in eradicating weeds right in their own area. They do a lot of myrtle spurge, teasel and musk thistle. And this year we are going to pilot working, eradicating poison hemlock with them. After a long SOP process of how that works, but they will be on the land with staff working on that. We have a few individual folks out doing myrtle spurge work in Chautauqua. That's coming quite a problem out there, so we're psyched to have them. And then we have native gardeners who work at the Armstrong Garden at the ranger cottage as well. Our wildlife monitors are our bat and raptor monitors, like I said earlier, some of our highest hours of folks out on the system. They're providing incredible data for ecologists, incredible observations. They're helping us make management decisions in regards to wildlife. They are troopers, they are often out very early in the morning. And as we know, our bat monitors are out in the evening. And a really joyful part of my job, I actually was a bat monitor a long time ago. And every night is fun because you're hiking out in the dark. So there's something fun every night to see. And lots of wildlife out at night. And I have heard from monitors the next day about mountain lion sightings. And the best ever was last year when I got a call kind of late at night and picked up the phone. And it was a couple of bat monitors out and they're telling me about a bear encounter. And that was great. I was happy they called me because I thought they were back at their cars. And after about 30 seconds, I'm like, so you're looking at the bear right now? Is that, is that it? And yeah, we walked through that together, all with pace and sound. I think I was more panicked than they were. Our education volunteers provided almost 1,000 hours of programming this year. They do much of that programming on the land, coming up with creative, wonderful programs, teaching about the flora, the fauna, about coexistence, biodiversity. And they also do a winter wildlife program, which the volunteers really started as a way to keep busy during the winter months. And it's super successful. We are in all the Boulder Valley School districts and we are focusing on wildlife issues like bears, lions, snakes and coyotes. And teaching, teaching the kids, we're hoping they're taking those lessons home with them. And lastly, our wellness, well, not lastly, second to lastly, our wellness volunteers. These are volunteers that support wellness and recreation out on the system. The top picture there is a yoga class about Flagstaff Amphitheater. We have one very dedicated volunteer, this will be her third season teaching yoga. Come join us some mornings, I think she starts usually around 8:30 on Saturdays. I'll have the date soon for those from Maddie. She just had a baby, but she tells me she will be back to teach, so we're excited about that. And then we have recreation volunteers and that bottom picture is two brand new volunteers. I actually, we just trained them. It's actually a father and his daughter who's standing behind like that. And they're helping Topher Downham with his hand cycle bike rides. And if you all have never been on one and would like to go, please reach out to me. I am, it's a really fun experience. And they now have motor assists on those bikes because they didn't the first year we did them. And you're tall, you know, you're moving. But yeah, happy to take anyone else who would like to experience that. We also had one other new partnership this year, and I think you've already heard about it maybe at a prior board meeting of the Boulder Community Health Pathways Program. And we've had three really dedicated education volunteers who have jumped into work with that group. So they're really fostering some deep connections between the natural and human community in Boulder through movement, reflection and lessons that nature provides. And they've really, they've really put their hearts and souls into that work. It can be very challenging, they have told me, and very rewarding. And last is our Open Space Trustees. Not forget you did.
We need a group photo of you.
I need a photo of y'all. So when I average your hours, you're each doing about 300 hours a year, which is a lot of work. So thank you. The whole master plan book, because you're pretty much helping us with all of those goals. So thanks again. And I'm going to turn it back to you.
Yes, like I mentioned earlier, we just want to take a few minutes just to remind that our team also beyond volunteerism, we do service learning as well, which we see that as, well, the first example I'll share is Ready to Work. This is where we are either working with a contract or we're paying youth through the Junior Ranger Program to do, again, hands-on work with our department. And this is a program Chris Weinberger runs, Ready to Work. Over a decade, we've had this contract and partnership with them. Incredible, incredible team. Really through this program, the whole goal is skill development so that Ready to Work members can learn skills to be able to then go and get land-based jobs or a pathway to another career. And they've worked, let's see how many hours, they had 50 project days with us last year on a variety of things. They helped with the Marshall Fire Recovery Efforts, they clean miles and miles and miles of ditch, ditches for us. They do invasive species removal. And one thing I want to give Chris Weinberger a kudos here is that, right, they're doing this work for us. And we also want to really be mindful of their holistic wellness. These are people that have experienced really tough times in their life. And so she has piloted working with Lauren Kolb to be able to get them out onto some of our agricultural sites to do work. And then also kind of like therapeutic, right? Like some therapeutic experiences to get to work with the livestock and get their hands literally like in the dirt, doing some plantings and things like that. So such an incredible, incredible experience. And then a success story, right? A former Ready to Work crew member was hired by OSMP and is now on the Fump Crew. So we love hearing those kinds of stories. And there's been so many other success stories with this program. And so, yeah, just huge shout out to that and every work group that supports this, the Ready to Work Program. Okay, next slide. And then Junior Ranger Program, Natasha Steiman leads this, the Junior Rangers for our department. And she was just here back in the fall, so I won't take too much time. I just want to say, super excited, again, her goal for that program over the last couple of years is to really be mindful and increase the diversity of the program by very targeted and strategic ways to look at what are the barriers to applying? Do folks feel, everyone in the community, that they have an equal chance to be able to apply? And so she's, one of the things I want to highlight is they had a partnership with the YSI program with Parks and Rec to start to work with middle school students so that they can start to get exposure to the Junior Ranger Program so that they can feel even more prepared to apply when they're high school students. And so again, shout out to Natasha and the Junior Ranger Program. And please take a look at the program report that's on the website now. Next slide. And wrapping it up with, I was just here, I think last month or two months ago? Our partnership impact, again, this program, we talked about so many partners we have in the community, we cannot do it without them. I will take a few minutes, not minutes, but seconds to say, again, we are grateful for the Boulder Open Space Conservancy. This is a, we do have an MOU with them, they are our official 501(c)(3), our fundraising partner. And so last year, they raised $41,945 towards the Mount Sanitas Project, which part of that, they were able to bring a helicopter to do some work there. And then they also brought in other money for the Junior Ranger Program for volunteer services and the education and outreach team. And so again, we are just really grateful for our partnership with BASK. And then, next slide, all right, we'll go into plans. We talked a little bit about this already, but again, our goal, continue to develop relationships with our volunteers, really focus on retention, try to bring up more participation levels similar to what Bo is seeing on the trails end of things. Continuing those climate action volunteer projects, we have had folks that reached out to Chris Weinberger saying like, thank you so much. I mean, folks want to volunteer, right? But it's, climate action is on really top of mind for so many people. And to have them feel like they're contributing towards that, we've gotten a lot of great feedback on that. As Bo mentioned, expanding Trail Work Tuesdays to Wednesdays, exploring more equity and diversity initiatives. And I won't read all of these, some of these I had already mentioned, but we're really excited for what the rest of this year brings. Next slide. And then now I will turn it over again, this is this part of the annual tradition where we'll have Dave say the declaration for National Volunteer Week.
Before I do that, I want to thank all of you. This is always such a really reassuring and uplifting moment for the board and the department. I mean, the volunteer program is really pretty special. And we thank you all for participating and working hard to make it so successful. So I'm honored to read this. I have to take my glasses off, I can't see anymore. The Open Space Board of Trustees joins the staff of the City of Boulder Open Space and Mountain Parks Department in recognizing all our volunteers during National Volunteer Week 2023. We salute the hundreds of Open Space and Mountain Parks volunteers who contributed their talents and efforts in helping the department carry out its city charter purposes for Open Space. This community of volunteers is an inspiration as their contributions help to protect the resources and provide for enjoyable experiences, making Boulder's Open Space and Mountain Parks a special place.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then last slide, right before we dive into questions, I do also want to thank again, this is not just this core team. Again, this is in our job descriptions officially to engage with volunteers. I want to thank the over 40 staff members at OSMP who also, again, as you were saying, this is like an interwoven, really, you know, foundation that our department works closely with volunteers. It's been a thread that's been woven through our department for so many years. And so just huge shout out to all the subject matter experts, all the liaisons, all the leads that work directly with the volunteers as well. They just aren't here presenting with us tonight. So with that, we have these questions for you and you don't, you know, feel free to ask whatever, but we're just curious, you know, are you hearing? If you are hearing from individuals about ways they want to get involved that you feel like we're not providing those opportunities now, please let us know about other ways we could help them get involved in. And otherwise, if you have any other questions about the SLP.
Seems like you're reaching a lot of people. And one of the goals is more individuals as opposed to pre-organized groups. Which has got to be challenging, it's handsier because you're getting one by ones as opposed to big chunks of people. I mean, it seems, I mean, this is an overwhelming success story, it seems to me.
So I was going to ask in that regard, is, what is the most effective way of reaching, you know, community members? Is the website good at that? Or what do you think is most effective as far as getting information out into the community, you know, for volunteer opportunities?
Pass it to both.
Social media has been helpful for those individuals that are maybe looking to find more. But we, in the trail world, I rely on the partners. You know, Boulder Mountain Bike Alliance is much better recruiting bikers to come out and do trail work than I am. So I go, great, you recruit, I'll develop the plan, keep you safe out there and we'll get some work done. So, but yes, social media has been one of those ways we're trying to explore. And, you know, trying to get people to talk up our program and tell their friends. Referral process or meeting them out on the trails. It's more common than you think, I see a trail runner that's like, hey, do you need help? I've friends, we do this every Saturday. Find something, so.
So the companies that reach out to you, do you ever reach out to companies? Mostly them contacting staff for opportunities for.
Mostly them contacting stuff and get, again, unless we already have a relationship with them prior year and we want to call them back and say, hey, are you interested in coming back? That kind of thing. But yeah, we, so we have a form on the website that people can, organizations can request a project, an organized project. And I wanted to say as well, shout out to the education and outreach staff at the ranger cottage, our volunteers, again, you know, when they're interacting with volunteers and trying to get that sense of what's, what are you excited about, about the system? And if they get an inkling of, oh, I'm excited about birds, you know, hey, we have this raptor program. And so a lot of that can happen through those thousands of contacts that you've seen from the slides.
How many of your volunteers are court mandated?
Dave would, Dave would know.
There's something on one of our slides. Yeah.
We can get back.
Yeah, a couple hundred a year.
Yeah.
It's a chunk.
Yeah.
I think I had one or two Trail Work Tuesdays last year that were doing some, they're doing some service, a couple of college.
You never know.
Why are you asking?
Certain organization that I know used to get a lot because they're a major name. And then people were looking at the list, they're just like, oh gosh, pick the top one and get over with. Anyway, so.
It says last year 20. We're so grateful for Dave Barry because, yeah, he has a relationship with the court system, so they know, like he's on their list, like they know to refer to Dave. Sometimes we can't take them because if they don't give us enough notice or, you know, so what we haven't been tracking as much is how many people were turning away just because of, you know, schedules don't work, the dates don't work or staff capacity on that given day. But yeah, there's definitely, for all of these programs, there's an interest and we have to turn folks away sometimes because we can't always provide the opportunity.
And that's where the volunteer cooperative through the whole city is great. Like just the other day, someone like so excited about the raptor program, but we're not recruiting any raptor volunteers. And we've already started like in January, we're out starting our raptor council things. But I just happened to go, wait, hold on a second. And then I popped a quick note to Joy Masters over at Parks and Rec. She goes, I need one more volunteer. I'm like, I got your person, hold on. And like within 10 minutes, he's like, what? And I'm like, I think Parks and Rec's got you, you know? And so it's a great system too, where we, if we're going to turn people away. And so it's a great system too, where we, if we're going to turn people away before we do so, I'm like, hey, check out this, check out that.
So what I heard is that, that repeat volunteers is good. Is that particularly in your area, Beau, where it's a little, the work is a little more technical with trails? And so you're going to spend some time training them, that you're wanting these repeat volunteers? Or is there a better source for repeat volunteers? Is it, I don't think it would be the one offs, but these organizations like, I think you said, that you listed BMA and such. So is that your biggest source of just volunteers in general in your, in the rec groups and also in the repeat?
Yeah, definitely. Those are the frequent flyers that are coming back or they're members of BMA and they've been riding here for twenty years or whatever, or climbers that have been involved. So I would say that is the big one. And, you know, the future is wide open. What you want to, what a lot of other agencies nationwide are doing is trying to get programs developed where you have volunteer crew leads, right? We're trying to work towards that where you have trained volunteers that are, have been sort of trained and signed off to be able to kind of lead others. So that kind of train the trainer program. So we're looking into that and seeing how we can develop something like that, too.
And I get that we could do a better job. My neighbor, who is a veterinarian, asked how he could get involved in building trails. I just, I sent him to BMA to work on trails because I didn't know actually how to find this source in the city. So I sent him to BMA because I knew they were doing the Trail Tuesdays. And so I think.
You can always send it to me, but I think BMA's.
Oh, I will. And the question for you, Debbie, with the poop volunteers, which just sounds so gross. I have my own dog and I'll, I can pick up other.
Yeah, me and stuff.
But you mentioned that you're flagging and, you know, I think in like Louisville, they have these, these flags on the trails that there are no poop fairies. Yeah, and I don't know, it's great that you're flagging them, grabbing people's attention.
Right.
It's not just a pile of poop, but it's something catchy that gets, yeah, it gets their attention that there's, of course, then you are actually saying there are poop fairies. You are, there are.
Yes, Michelle, I agree with you, yes. It's a little bit of, I've always had a little bit of controversy because I don't believe that we should be picking up everyone's poop. I believe the users and the dog, you know, guardians should be picking up their poop. So we are looking at it as a way to make it, it's an awareness campaign is what we want it to be, not a we're going to pick your poop up campaign, more of an awareness. So the flags are to point that out. I'm working right now, I don't think I've been tough out of yet with you now, Dan and Lisa Gonzalo, on another dog poop initiative that will be coming down the play in another few months, maybe with a pilot program that we will bring to you to talk more about how we continue that thread of not being the poop fairy, but making more awareness, more people, maybe more ambassadors, someone out on the ground who can remind people.
How many?
What?
Ambassadors.
Ambassadors, I'm surprised.
How many of those, how much of the poop was actually in a bag that you're flagging versus?
Yeah, almost, I'd say eighty percent is sitting in a pile. When we're flagging, I'd say, maybe with no bag. And another twenty percent bagged and on the trail.
Is there a way to plug into the user, the user groups and kind of like you're, you're doing that with the, with the dog people? Fidos, DC pantry, the businesses in town that maybe could funnel some more volunteers for a coordinated effort not to pick up a poop? Maybe just.
It's a great idea. I love that. We are reaching out to fight, you know, we are regularly reaching out to Fidos. But, and in the past, we've reached out to a couple of like the adoption agencies around town. Humane Society, we've been invited them to come out to some, some of our, like at the trailhead at Sanitas, a poop event, like a do it event. But we've said, come on out, we can put a table up and talk about what you do in the dog community. So, yeah, but that's great. I think we, I think it's a good reminder to reach out to more of those folks.
Well, I hope for those individual poop volunteers, you're giving them a whole lot of swag.
Agree, yes.
Thanks for the work, David.
Okay, if we're going to still stay on schedule, we, please have time. This is all lead up to the 2023 work plan and budget conversation. Thanks, guys. It's great and things lie.
What, I say, what are you, speaking of waste? All right. So this is going to be our first of four touches this year on the budget. This is more of a high level discussion tonight. And with that, we're going to turn things over to Sam McQueen, our Senior Manager of Business Services.
Thanks, Dan. Good evening, trustees, and welcome, Brady. I'm Sam McQueen, as Dan mentioned, I'm the Business Services Senior Manager for the department. I'm joined by Cole Moffett, our Senior Accountant for the department. We're going to be talking to you today about our draft 2024 work plan and budget update. Next slide, please. So we'll start tonight with the goal of the April business meeting. Then we'll look at the timeline of budget presentations to the OSBT before moving on to the 2024 budget and work plan development processes. And then we'll have some time at the end for questions and discussion. Next slide, please. Our goal tonight is to ensure the OSBT has an understanding of the city's budget development process ahead of upcoming business meetings. Next slide, please. So this is our first meeting together to discuss the 2024 work plan and budget. We'll be coming to you to discuss budget at the next three business meetings, excuse me, so May through July. And then important city council and planning board meetings are also listed here for your review. Next slide, please. In previous years, the OSBT made recommendations on next year's budget for the Capital Improvement Program, or CIP, and operating budgets separately. After feedback from the OSBT and review with OSMP staff, we'll combine presentation, discussion, and recommendation of the CIP and operating budget as we plan for 2024. This chart shows the high level topics to be covered at each meeting. In July, we'll have a public hearing and seek the OSBT's recommendation on the 2024 CIP and operating budget together. Next slide, please. So beginning with a high level overview of our budgeting process, OSMP are the fund managers of the Open Space Fund. But we also receive some appropriation from the Lottery Fund for certain CIP projects. The Lottery Fund is managed centrally for the city by the Finance Department. In the last couple of years, we've accomplished several projects with lottery money, including construction of a pedestrian bridge at the crossing of Four Mile Creek and rehabilitation of the Lewis House. In some cases, the Lottery Fund will pay for all expenses tied to a project. In others, projects may receive dollars from both the Open Space Fund and Lottery Fund. In 2023, we received four hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars from the Lottery Fund to pay for a portion of the cost to construct the North Sky Trail. The OSBT is asked to recommend appropriations for both funds each year. And then moving on to the Open Space Fund, it's a special revenue fund to be used specifically for open space purposes. As the fund managers, we ensure that we uphold best practices in fund stewardship. And we also prepare and share a detailed fund financial with the OSBT and the public each year, which consists of the funds' revenues, expenditures, and reserves. Next slide, please. This chart shows where our funds fall within the city's governmental funds. Overall governmental funds are used to account for all or most of a government's general activities, including the collection and dispersment of earmarked money, the acquisition or construction of general fixed assets, and the servicing of long-term debt. The Open Space Fund accounts for all of these activities and the other funds may be more specific to certain activities. You'll see the general fund listed here, which is used to account for all activities of the general government that are not accounted for in any of these other funds. The Open Space Fund no longer relies on transfers from the general fund, as you may have seen in previous years. Next slide, please. Turning to revenues, OSMP receives our revenue forecast from the Finance Department on a six-year rolling schedule. Refinements to the schedule are made annually based on updated projections. We're currently expecting to receive 2024 revenue projections in May in time for the June business meeting. And ninety-three percent of draft revenues collected in 2022 come from sales and use taxes. The Open Space Fund is comprised of different sales tax increments that were adopted through ballot measures over the city's longstanding conservation efforts. From this schedule, OSMP currently receives a point seven seven tax increment on sales tax within the city of Boulder. Next slide, please. So to explain how this shows up in the retail sales tax category, which is the largest revenue source for the Open Space Fund, for every retail tax dollar collected in Boulder, forty-two cents is retained by the city of Boulder. And of that forty-two cents, nine cents goes to the Open Space Fund. Next slide, please. One of the master plan strategies to promote financial sustainability centers on diversifying our revenue sources, since we rely so heavily on sales and use taxes. To that point, staff have been asking, have been seeking new grants and looking for more opportunities to collect revenues in the department. We also expect to receive funding from the recently passed climate tax. OSMP is grateful to the community and their support of the climate tax, which passed in November 2022. Collections began in January 2023. As a partner to other departments in this work, OSMP expects to receive six hundred thirty-five thousand dollars from the Climate Tax Fund in the 2023 budget to support enhanced wildfire resilience actions. From here, I'll turn it over to Cole to discuss additional budget work and work planning information.
Thanks, Sam, and good evening, trustees. Cole Moffett, Senior Budget Accountant. So OSMP's budget is comprised of two main components. As you might have seen, CIP and operating. The CIP contains discrete projects typically over fifty thousand dollars and focuses on enhancement and maintenance of public infrastructure. The city definition of capital expenditures focuses on like facilities and streets. But the Open Space Fund has a bit wider per view as we adopt into like land management practices and acquisition efforts. But also we have the operating budget, which focuses on day-to-day core services in the department, such as like personnel expenditures and ongoing programs that will continue year after year. And to put this into context, Open Space staff would propose construction of a new trail as a CIP project. But then the ongoing costs would be proposed under the operating budget to maintain that trail. And Sam and I will discuss both components of the budget in deeper dives over the next few meetings as we plan that out. Next slide, please. So moving along, we also have reserves and adjustments to consider. So Open Space maintains twenty percent reserves in our fund financial to be adequately prepared for economic cycles and natural disasters. Our reserves are calculated at twenty percent of all operating costs plus debt. And focusing on adjustments, departments have an opportunity to request additional funds for emergent and unplanned expenses that were not captured during the typical budget process. This happens each year in May and November. And the capital carryover from previous years runs concurrent with the first ATV in May. So this is an example, a few examples of the ATV that we submitted in November of last year. And from this chart, you can see that these items all come from different sources like grants, donations, or a fund balance appropriation, which means there is no corresponding revenue intake. So that money comes straight from the Open Space Fund bank account. And as Sam showed on an earlier slide, OSMP on any given year is about ninety-three percent revenues from sales tax. So it's very important that we continue to seek out other funding sources like grants to diversify our revenue. So focusing on some work planning, Open Space has developed a robust work planning process that is refined annually. It involves our staff building out project descriptions, estimated costs, schedules, and is reviewed and vetted through our leadership team to ensure a balanced cross functions and master plan alignment. Projects are also reviewed by council and community prioritization, capacity, cost estimates, design, as well as a status as a new or continued project. The high priority projects are funded and projects that are determined to be less of a priority or are not ready are deferred to future years. So an example of this might be a project that requires some additional design work and is not yet ready for implementation might be deferred. So once Open Space finalizes our draft budget, we submit to the central budget team in the Finance Department for citywide review. The city has made several efficiencies to the budget development process and we will inform the board of any updates as we meet over the next few months. And so from what you've heard this evening, there are a few key aspects of the budget we'd like to highlight for future meetings. The department will look to program increased revenue projections into the CIP and operating budget. We'll also partner with the Finance Department to program additional revenue from the climate tax. We heard feedback from the board last year around assigning staffing needs to programs and projects. And we'll continue to assess staffing needs with additional expected revenues. Staff are also closely reviewing the definition of CIP to determine if there would be any items in the CIP that would better be managed as the operating budget and vice versa. And finally, we'll continue to connect the budget components to the master plan through our process. And so with that, are there any questions that the OSBT has to ensure that we're bringing the most useful content forward in future meetings?
Thanks, guys. Any questions or comments?
You said the twenty percent operating reserves are calculated from annual operating budget plus debt. Is that annual debt service or total debt?
No, it's annual debt service per year. Yeah, so it's twenty percent each year of the six-year horizon.
Okay.
And we have one, we issued a bond in 2014 that we're paying. And then we have two outstanding bumpa notes, which is a ten-year payment process to acquire property. So debt service, like over the last five years is probably down, what, eighty percent or something like that? As we've paid off other bumpa notes in our oh-six and oh-seven bonds. But we're, we're in each year holding twenty percent of what is in that year. Yeah.
That's just cash, just sits in cash.
Yeah. And most frequently, what we're seeing for that use of reserves is around fire and flood, right? So we're able to, through adjustment base appropriate, for example, one point six million in damage from a marshal fire. So we're pulling from that contingency in order to front the cost of repairs.
And Brady, just from a citywide perspective, that each department, there's recommendations for each department to develop their own appropriate level of reserves. The city's general funds is trying to get to the twenty percent level, but I think they're almost there.
Sixteen, seventeen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think they're up in the high teens now with the goal of that. So there's a citywide effort to make sure each department is weighing where they, where it's appropriate for them for reserves because we're so dependent on the economic fluctuations, Dan, fire and flood. We're landing at that twenty percent. I think the general fund's trying to get to the twenty percent too, from a citywide perspective.
What, other question, what are the, what are the implications of changing or honing in on the definition of CIP versus operating? Is it, is it advantageous? Is it easier to get CIP dollars? And so you're kind of like, it's, oh, we can put more in that bucket, it's better for us, like what?
Yeah, I can start by answering it if other folks want to jump in. So I think there's, we define the operating budget as these ongoing core services. So we're trying to take a look at what we have been funding in the CIP year over year and what is part of our ongoing core service. And so we'll be coming to you with some, some thoughts on what we think those ongoing core services are. CIP is really those discrete projects. So they're the really, you know, the high dollar amount, fifty thousand dollars or more, short-term projects. And so we're taking a look at, you know, where are we focusing our efforts for those, those six-year short-term projects versus what are we going to fund year over year? And we will just consider that part of our base budget every year, where we'll, we'll just have that as our standard year over year to cover costs.
And just a couple of examples that come to mind. So every year, as long as I've been here, eight years or so, we've had a CIP project for agricultural fencing, where we're funding between five thousand and seven thousand linear feet of fence replacement every year. So that's something where we, we know we're going to be out repairing fence every year. And so is now an opportunity where we have a, we know our sales tax got extended. We have recovered from our COVID revenue cuts, we're seeing increased revenue. Is this an opportunity to just? Yeah, exactly. We know that staff is going to be managing fence replacements, same with ditch maintenance and culvert maintenance out on some of these irrigated fields. And even, even things, and we're not positive on this one yet. This is one that we're kind of on the fence about, invasive tree removals out of the Ecological Restoration Group. We've been funding that CIP every year. Realistically, Megan knows she's going to be doing tree removals every year. So does it, does it make sense to keep requesting that as new funding every year in the CIP rather than it's part of our base budget? She knows what she has every year and she can go and execute on those contracts. So to Cole's point earlier, these, these city definitions were designed for infrastructure. It's like moving dirt heavy equipment. And so we're not always a clean fit into, to some of these capital definitions, so.
And I would just say, from a citywide perspective, again, each city finance is asking each city department to have more consistency in what we define as a CIP project. So we were already well underway and this year there's sort of an ask of, can you align yourselves with this definition? Council's been asking about it in particular about, you know, what is a capital project? And so from a citywide perspective, we're trying to get all departments to be speaking the same lingo and to kind of applying the criteria and the definition of a CIP project consistently. So luckily, we already were doing that, but it sort of enhances the reason why we want to take a closer look. So you'll see some shifts. So you'll see some shifts this year from things that we, you might have seen showing up in a C I P, it's now going to be showing up in operating. And there's some nuances between capital projects, you can carry over the money year to year, and when is that spent? So there's some.
Operating goes away.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And then on the flip side. From the board's, from previous board's perspectives, that they were always, these conversations were always discreet conversations. And it, it struck some of us that it started to make more sense to kind of, you know, start combining them so that, you know, we could understand better, you know, kind of project wise, what, what was really, you know, the cost? You know, the funding and stuff, so this, I think, is really a good step in that regard.
Yeah, I'll just say that I really like that we're doing the capital and the operating budgets together, so thank you for doing that. And that's, that was not easy, especially to get all of your assumptions and to, to, to get those dates to line up. I'm wondering, like, how often have you had to go to those May and November A T B conversation, adjustment to base conversations? And why do you have to go in and ask for, to spend money that be, when you've got an associated revenue, when it's strictly a pass through? So I saw in your example, Cole, that you put like thirty four thousand dollars for a grant, then you actually have to ask, ask to spend it. So it just seems, I know, like a lot of busy work.
It does, yeah, I can start. The way it happens, like in that case with BOSS where we got the donation from Astonita, so if we receive a check, I think it was thirty four thousand dollars. At the department level, we can add it to our revenue, but we can't add it to our expense. We add it to our expense, it shows up as a negative actual, so it's just kind of peculiar. So like the way we have to do it is we have to add it to the budget side, but just the way the city is structured, the only way at the department level we can add to the budget is through the normal budget cycle or through the adjustment to base. And so sometimes we don't necessarily need to program that thirty four thousand, but we still want to signal to the council or to the public that like, hey, we've received this donation from this group, or it could be strategic in that way. But I think it's just a little bit of a mixed bag of both of those things where like if we could put that on our budget ourselves, we would and not have to go through this process, but this is kind of what it is.
So in the case of BOSS, when you get this money and you said, you mentioned that you don't have to program it, can you carry it over? Do you have to budget it on the expense side so you can carry it over?
Yes and no, and I guess where it gets nuanced if it goes to a capital project or the operating. So it will carry over on the capital side on the books, but it'll carry over indefinitely regardless. Because if we don't program it, it'll just go to the fund balance in the bank, which will then just be there until it gets appropriated to something else.
If you put it in the expense line and you don't spend it, you're going to show that you're a surplus.
If it's a capital project.
It's a capital project, yes, and it'll carry over. If it's operating, it'll just zero out, go to the bank. And, yeah.
And there's so many very nuanced examples. I mean, we have, we have a quest from a gentleman who passed away a couple of years ago, who dedicated a certain amount with, with attachments, right? I want this to be spent on flora and fauna, so in the first year we spent, you know, thirty five thousand, and then we carry over the balance into the, into the next year, right? But we want to be able, part of the benefit, I think, from finances perspective is the, is the tracking, when you have to do like federal and state grant reporting or report out to somebody where you can show each year that it was carried, how much of it was spent, what was it spent on? But it is a challenging process, and, and I think what we're trying to do, you'll, you'll, you'll actually be seeing more. We, we've started showing you our A T B requests, like they're, they're in the council packet, you have access to them, but we wanted, we wanted to start including that in what, in what you're seeing in your review. And you'll actually see an expanded A T B from us over the next couple of years. Part of what council's been interested in is when there are changes in your capital program, naming those through adjustment to base. So for example, if we were planning to do a trailhead project and it got stuck in permitting, our normal business practice would be, okay, what's the next trailhead project in the queue? Get that one going while we went on a permit. What council is interested in seeing is, well, no, you made a, you made a commitment to the community to do that specific site, and so they'd like to use the adjustment to base process to name that to the community, that there's been a change in the work plan. So we actually think you're going to see a ballooning A T B from us over the next couple of years, just as we adjust to that process.
Which I found very interesting, there, there were some things in there that I've never heard of or wasn't aware of. And there seems to be some wide, fairly wide fluctuations year to year. And just as an example, this business use tax audit line, I've never heard of that. What, what is that in light of these numbers fluctuate so widely from year to year?
Yeah, so those are, those are actual audits that the finance department performs on our, our behalf. And so we are part of, as you saw, we have the point seven seven tax increment. So we're part of that larger picture of sales and use taxes for the whole city. And so we get some portion of, of these tax increments. And so you'll see that there's a one for business tax, there should be one for motor vehicle use tax, one for construction use tax, they have these different audit categories. We again get some, some piece of, of that for the city.
So those are city operations that we then get a part of as an outcome of whatever analysis or whatever, yeah, evaluation that they're doing.
Yeah, and I think the, the narrative typically when we talk about the open space tax, we talk about sales and use tax.
Right.
Retail sales tax is, is a very straightforward category, that's the example that you highlighted on the slide. These use taxes, construction, business use, motor vehicle use, they fluctuate significantly year to year, and a lot of that has to do with like economic conditions. And while they're permitting, construction use in particular varies based on, you know, what, what are those major development projects that come through planning board that get approved? And, and so those, those are revenue lines for us every year, but in terms of our ability to, to predict, they, they fluctuate greatly relative to retail sales. And then audit, this is something with the, the city launched a new sales and use tax remittance system a couple of years ago, which gave the finance department sort of an enhanced reporting and tracking ability. And so they're now staffed to be able to go follow up with businesses to ensure they're getting their collections and remittances to the city. So we've definitely seen an uptick in those audit revenue categories in the last couple of years since we launched that software.
Okay, great. And then another question I had is just an example on the egg leases, it looks like, you know, there's a seventeen percent decline. What, what is the basis for that?
Yeah, so we are in a, a draft phase of the twenty twenty two budget. So basically, our collections can also, are still being reported back to twenty twenty two, so we do expect to see that number to go up. That's one of those areas that it's not necessarily surprising that it's negative change right now. You know, when we see the final, final numbers over the next couple of months, we should see that even out of it.
It's done projection, it's an actual.
Yeah, yep.
And that has to do with, you know, December rent payments and things like that. And then the other thing we always partner with Andy and Lauren on is, when are, when are these leases coming to a close? And are we running application cycles? And so we have some, some months where we're not collecting an egg lease while that is not in use, while we, you know, determine the competitive outcome of a process. So there's, there's always a little bit of a fluctuation there through that process.
Well, this, this table reveals that there's, there's far more in revenue inputs than I realized, so, and thanks. Any other questions or comments? So we'll expect to see the next iteration in what, June?
In May, yeah, we'll be back in May, June, and July.
Right, okay.
Can I, one quick question, I want to give some, Dan, what's your, how, how much, what's your involvement with the budget process? And how, how has it worked best for your board? I mean, obviously, there's this huge, you guys have put a lot of thought into the process, but like, how, how much of your hands and fingerprints are on this? And historically, how much does the board kind of monkey with it or?
I think you're the Excel brains, right?
No, that's not true. Well, that's, I can answer that in a couple of questions. So I have, over the last two and a half to three years, I've been very involved in the citywide budgeting process. They have a team called the executive budget team, in which they have a rotating directors of certain departments every year serve on that. I think there's two ad hoc departments each year that, and so I was serving on a, a three year term on the citywide budgeting process, which is very time intensive. So my term just ended today, actually. Actually, I found it fascinating, I'm just kind of sorry my term ended, but, so I have my hands on, on the citywide budget processing. In terms of the development here, obviously, we have day to day folks that are working on this, but we also have what we call a director's team, which is consists of our four deputy directors, our, our, our science officer with a new title forthcoming, and myself. And this team sort of takes all the work that our staff is doing, calculates it up, and then we have a number of meetings throughout the year. And sometimes our deputies are meeting month, weekly, and is this aligning with our work plan priorities? Is this aligning with master plan? And so we're supporting and Sam and Cole's work, who's supporting our work, and it's sort of an iterative process. So from the department leadership perspective, we're looking at prioritization decisions, alignment decisions with master plan priorities, and also staff capacity. Like, is this, are we really hitting a certain staff area hard where they're underwater? And is there a way where we could do some adjustments to make sure things are evened out so we have the even capacity to take this work on? So there's a lot of work at the leadership team level, probably more so in the last year or two than previous. We've sort of have decided that as deputies and as a director, we have our fingers in it anyway, and so we're formalizing what that looks like. So we have a pretty big role in it.
Yeah, no, and the other part of your question was around the, the board's role, and across the city, that varies greatly, how different departments are engaging with their boards and commissions. When I got here, we, you saw it once, you voted on it that night, and we really wanted to expand that. We were doing five months, now we're doing four, but we're also adding packets around like year on, we did the memo back in October on our point of sale programs and permit programs. And so we want to make sure that you're informed very regularly and involved in those things. Some of the things we've done are, we have three hundred and fifty projects a year across the whole department. And so as we've talked about how to approach the board, we've, we've put those into some general buckets, like we're always going to have some, some conversation about ecological restoration, trailer repair, trailheads. The sort of specifics around which trails we're going to go do in any given year are less important. You know, we're really looking at, do we have the right policy level, strategic level engagement for you all? Are, are we hitting it right in terms of the way we're prioritizing our work?
Yeah, thank, thanks for offering that too, yeah. So I would say at the individual project level, there's not a lot of boards directed to say, hey, eliminate that one project. We hope we're coming forward with telling you that we've been doing twelve months of that prioritization based on capacity at the individual staff level and prioritization. But what we'd like to hear from you all is in terms of our big asset classes or our master plan priority tier one strategies, which we'll give you information on. Do you feel like the allocation in these big bucket areas is right? Or if you would like us to start, you know, enhancing one and maybe de-accelerating others, that might take a year to sort of get back to you and result in. But love for you guys to be looking at the high level stuff of priority buckets and are we hitting it right?
I think the charter, for example, calls for actually two major, you know, responsibility areas for the board. One is disposal, decisions on disposal of Open Space, the other is approval of the budget. So those two actions of the board are called out in city charters. The board's, you know, purview is, I mean, what we look at is really based, the details based on, you know, staff presentation. Ultimately, we're responsible for approving it.
Yeah, well, actually, recommend. Recommending, recommending to council. And so if we hear concerns, we'll try to adjust what we're hearing from the board before we present it to the city manager. And then the city manager will take all the department and then bring that forward to council. So it's sort of a three step process. We, we'll start at the staff level, we'll get some feedback from the board, hopefully address your concerns, present it to the city manager through the E B T process, and then that goes onward to planning board and council.
Great, thanks, you guys, appreciate that, looks good, and we'll look forward to next month.
See you next month.
I know, I'm on it, I'm on it.
Brady's sitting there looking at the clock. All right, Dan, you can have the final word.
No, a final five minutes, less than that, just a couple of verbal updates really quick. Just want to remind the board of our upcoming open house, which will be in person this year again, after about a three year hiatus from in person. So really looking forward to that, that's April twenty fifth in the evening here at the hub. We'll be, and that's sort of looking at this year of upcoming projects that will be daylighting to the public. And we'll have booths that are, will be staffed. And so if folks have questions on upcoming trail projects or upcoming ecological restoration projects, or education opportunities coming up, volunteer. We might have some master plan materials available, so just a great chance for the public to interact with our program areas.
We have some stuff for kids.
Will we have some stuff for kids?
Yes, yeah, we actually do.
And let me just urge board members, this is a real good opportunity to, you know, interact with the public, you know, learn specifically what's going on as far as upcoming with program. So if you can make it, which I unfortunately this year can't, but if you can't make it, yes.
Great, great, great. I also want to call your attention to this Friday is the twenty twenty three Front Range Open Space Research Symposium. You may know that we run a small grants program to help get researchers looking at our system and providing us with valuable data and information. And every, and I think it's every other year, we have a symposium in which we invite some of the researchers to come in and tell us what they learned. And so we'll be eight thirty to twelve thirty at the University of Colorado Seek lecture room. You do have to register, but it's free, just looking for account. And this is a partnership project with City of Longmont, Jefferson County Open Space, Boulder County Parks and Open Space, and City of Boulder. And so, and plus, I'm doing an opening welcome remarks, so you got to comment, cheer me on. Next, I just want to give you a quick update. In March, we hosted about thirteen official representatives from thirteen tribal nations. And to come in and have a, a two day negotiation session with City of Boulder staff. I was a lead in that, it was, it's always one of the highlights of the year. We're working towards updating and renewing a memorandum of understanding that we have with over a dozen tribal nations that have, that have a historical connection to the Boulder Valley. It was a very successful meeting that at the end of the two days, we all sort of said, we think we're done with this M O U. It's ready to go to the decision makers, so the tribal nations are bringing it back to their, their boards. And the M O U at some point will also go forward to city council. So we're super excited to update that memorandum of understanding, and we also brought them out to a couple of city open space properties that have ties to our tribal nations. And that was very rewarding, we went to Jewel Mountain as well as the People's Crossing. So a great couple of days with them, and then we actually followed up on a Friday with three other tribal nations continuing our work on developing a land management plant, plan for our Fort Chambers poor farm property. And had a meeting with them in which Dave participated in the opening for that, so thank you. And finally, with three minutes left, just want to call your attention that we are setting on that May eighteenth date for a field trip with the Open Space Board. The theme for May eighteenth is going to help support our upcoming summer discussions with you all on prairie dog management on irrigated agricultural lands. And so we will have staff out and looking at a few different areas to help prep for some memos you'll be getting, and eventually some discussion with our staff on what we call the preferred alternative, which was a recommended management strategy that was adopted in twenty twenty, that went to city council, that went to board, had a lot of community feedback. And we're doing a three year assessment of that, some lessons learned, and we could be recommending some tweaks to that plan. And so this field trip is geared to help support those conversations that we're. And so this field trip is geared to help support those conversations that we have upcoming with y'all.
Have you gotten the responses from all of the board members?
Yes, positive, all around, five.
Great, great.
So we'll get more information out to you on the details of that. So those are my verbal updates.
Let me add just one more, and then at the stroke of nine. This is just a reminder, May 4th and 5th, maybe the evening of May 4th. And May 5th, we will be having our retreat. The location for that still remains to be determined. And the location for the dinner Thursday night may be determined, but the timeframes, which we're still working on, will be five to eight generally on Thursday night, and 8:30 to 2:30 Friday, the next day. So anyway, there will be additional information coming as soon as we have it. So we're looking forward to that. Is there any other, are there any other comments for the good of the order? If not, this concludes the meeting of the Open Space Board of Trustees, April 12th, 2023. And. I've waited years to do that.
And you're one for one, ending on.